Prince President of P O A and John Powers I F F via email. I sent them the agenda report. I asked if they had any questions. They all responded kindly. They're very appreciative of the action of consideration for this item.
And there's no need then for some type of written document where both parties sign off?
As such as a side letter, not at this time, not with your approval.
Okay.
Very well, thank you very much Vice Mayor. If there's any further requests, I'll look around here to the screen. I don't see a hand. Vice Mayor, if I go back to you, there you go. Oh, did you? You pressed it?
Lower my hand.
So we will lower our hands. That's first one, first time I've seen that. So I appreciate that Vice Mayor Nunez. Just want to inform everybody in the meeting that we have now gone live on Facebook Live. And I want to welcome any member of the public that is tuned into this portion of the meeting. We'll be here going through the rest of the city council meeting. So thanks for tuning in. Looking for a motion to approve this action item.
Can I motion a second?
We got a motion by Vice Mayor Nunez. We have a second by Councilmember Dominguez. All in favor? Aye. Opposed. None heard. The motion is carried. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to adjourn this special meeting here.
Yes, Mayor. May I ask just one, Chris, one question? Would we need to read this out, read the votes out?
Vice Mayor Nunez, we have a second.
Voice wise?
Favor?
Yeah, for audio only?
Really? Yeah.
We're using teleconferencing. We should do a roll call vote. I know this is a little of a hybrid approach because we have video. So.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Let's go ahead and do a formal roll call. So we called the question. We had a second. I'll do the roll call. Councilmember Fan?
Aye.
Councilmember Montana?
Aye.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nunez?
Aye.
And Mayor Tran?
Aye.
The item passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. And I'm glad we're figuring this out together here with the virtual meeting. And so with that action item approved, let's go ahead and adjourn this special meeting. This meeting of the special meeting is adjourned and we'll move on to our next meeting. Okay, so now we're going to move on to our meeting, if we can call it that. So I'll go ahead and call that meeting to order and we'll go to Mary for the roll call.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and I'm calling the role for the regular meeting. Councilmember Fan?
Aye.
Councilmember Montana?
Here.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Nunez?
I'm still here.
And Mayor Tran?
Here.
Thank you very much, Mary. And before we adjourn to closed session, we'll look to our city attorney, Christopher Diaz.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Just wanted to note for the council and the public, we are only going to do one closed session tonight. And that will be item B on your closed session agenda, which is conference with labor negotiator for our city manager's contract. The other two items are here for tonight in the interest of time and I think what's going on in our state of the day.
Thank you very much, Chris. With that being said, we'll go ahead and adjourn to closed session. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to welcome everybody that's tuning in all across the Milpitas. This is the Milpitas City Council meeting for Tuesday evening, March 17. We are doing this for the first time. And so we appreciate everybody's understanding as we are socially distant. Social distancing is the theme of tonight's meeting. It is our first time doing this and we appreciate everybody's understanding. As you can see, we're all in different locations, following the same guidelines that you are at home and in the community. And so tonight we'll be conducting the city's business to make sure that everything is going sound. On the internet, if you're tuning in, you've been provided a link. If you'd like to send a comment, a question, there is a link where you are tuning in on whichever platform you are. We're also tracking here on Facebook, which is pretty cool. And I will look to see if we can get Councilmember Montana here to join us virtually. I know connections, technology, I T really for me a lot, you know. It's require some assistance sometimes. So Councilmember Montana was with us just a moment ago. I don't want to start too soon ahead of her. If we can have somebody, I know staff, we have a couple dozen staff here that are tuned in as participants, almost over 20. So if somebody could reach out to Councilmember Montana to ensure that she's connected. Thank you, staff. I know you're doing that right now. Those that are listening in and are the experts with I T. So thank you. And we'll stand by here. While we're waiting, I do want to also remind folks that aren't virtual that folks can go to the senior center that is an available space with social distancing in mind for an opportunity. Member of the public that has decided to be here physically. The senior center is an option and we do have technology there for folks to communicate with us through our deputy city clerk who's over there. Thank you very much, Pam. And so we're going to get everybody's public comment or ensure an opportunity for everybody to speak. This is a new format for us virtually, unfortunately due to the coronavirus. Okay, I'm looking here at my screen. Don't see confirmation for Councilmember. It's a slight delay here. I want to thank the nearly 30 people that are tuning in via Facebook. You can share this video feed on your timeline with your neighbor or your Milpitas family. And we will really be addressing the priorities here in Milpitas through this virtual meeting. And so feel free to share the link and let's get through these times together and put our best foot forward and do our best. Well, we're going to go ahead and move forward here. I think Councilmember Montana will continue to get the support from our great staff. And I know she'll be online very quickly. Do you want to be mindful of the time here this evening as we were in closed session? And now we're back out. I want to go to our city attorney, Christopher Diaz, for any updates.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to know for the council and the public that the council only heard item B as involved in closed session on the agenda. The remaining items, A and C, were not heard, but with regard to be, the council provided direction to staff, but there is no reportable action out of closed session.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Chris. And now I want to turn to our city manager, Steve McHarris. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to provide a little, just a brief bit of information for the council and definitely for the viewers. The public is viewing this broadcast. Tonight's council meeting, we've set this up as an online meeting for the council and staff to call in. So we're all calling in remote. We are not at the council chambers. And the residents can watch and provide live comments using the online live stream the city set up. The live streams can be accessed through the city's Facebook page. I just wanted to let everybody know that's watching, would like to watch.
Thank you very much, Steve. With that being said, next up here is the pledge of allegiance. Wherever you are, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. If you have a flag, please do so appropriately. And I will lead the pledge of allegiance.
Begin. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance. Flag.
By the United States.
The United States of America.
To the republic.
Free public.
For which it stands.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty. Justice.
For us.
Thank you very much, everybody. As we work through the current conditions here in our regional society. Next up here on the agenda is the invocation. Tonight's invocation is assigned to myself. I was sadly. Had some sad emotions knowing that we weren't having a physical meeting and we weren't. Due to the safety of pastors out there, did not bring one in. But I do want to take a moment to ask everybody in their own personal way to reflect on the challenges that we're facing now as a society, as residents, as leaders, and to really put forth twice as much attention to those that are experiencing the coronavirus itself. It's just a tragedy that we have lost community members throughout the area to this virus. And I want to take a moment of silence to recognize and in their memory of those that have passed away due to the virus and. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on here next on the agenda is the presentation. We do have a proclamation for this month. And no matter what the weather or challenge that we experience, we're going to go ahead with our traditional and customary presentations. In this month, we have a proclamation. This month here in March, we're going to recognize March as Women's History Month. And so I'm going to read the proclamation here. American women have dedicated their lives to achieving equal rights for all Americans and envisioning a society where women could pursue a formal education, start a business, serve in the military, or run for elected office. American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and societal role in every facet of life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside throughout the community. In 1981, Congress passed legislation which authorized the week beginning March 7, 1982, be proclaimed as Women's History Week, later passing a law in 1987 to designate the month of March as Women's History Month. In 2020, America celebrates the 100-year anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States, which gave women the right to vote after over 70 years of suffrage, struggle, and resistance. Here in Santa Clara County, the Women, the Office of Women's Policy was created in 1998 to identify and address the specific policy areas of economic advancement, women and girls' leadership, gender-based violence, and women and girls' justice. Women's History Month is about underscoring the extraordinary struggles and celebrating the exceptional achievements of women throughout history in the United States. Now, therefore, I, Rich Tran, the mayor of the city of Milpitas, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2020 in Milpitas as Women's History Month. That's it for our presentations this evening. We're still rocking forward and recognizing our values here in town, even virtually, no matter where or when. And so moving on here to public forum. If any comments from the public are from the senior center, I will look to that.
Mayor, this is the city clerk.
Okay.
There are no residents present any longer at the senior center, so there are no comments from there. I have received two comments from the public via the website. Okay, I'm going to proceed to read those to you, if that's all right.
Please, thank you.
Okay. The first email correspondence is from Allison McDonald. She writes, Dear Mayor Tran, Vice Mayor Nunez, and City Council Members, I want to urge City Council to take action tonight to pass an urgency ordinance to protect renters from eviction during the emergency. No one should lose their home during a shelter-in-place emergency. Please consider protecting small businesses as well so we don't lose our homegrown jobs. Thank you for your service at this difficult time. Allison McDonald. Okay. We have a second correspondence. This one is from Michael Trujillo, Staff Attorney, Law Foundation of Silicon Valley. Dear Mayor Tran and members of City Council, the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley writes to request that Milpitas City Council consider enacting an eviction moratorium. We are in an unprecedented health crisis. Yesterday, residents of Santa Clara County were ordered to shelter in place. This order will leave thousands of our Santa Clara County neighbors without employment. Restaurant and bar staff, retail workers, and other hourly wage workers who typically don't have sick leave or vacation leave will be forced to rely on unemployment benefits. Currently, those benefits are only $450 a week. With the average rent in the county around $2,700, unemployment benefits aren't nearly enough to cover the cost of rent. Without protection against eviction, many of our hardworking neighbors will be forced into homelessness. Small businesses will be shuttered and without income, many of these business owners will be evicted from their commercial spaces. If evicted from their retail space, many of these businesses will never recover. Yesterday, Governor Newsom issued an executive order giving local jurisdictions authority to halt evictions for renters and homeowners. The governor's order also called on financial institutions to implement an immediate moratorium on foreclosures related to lost income from COVID-19. This means that when a local jurisdiction passes an eviction moratorium, foreclosures resulting from lost rental income will be prohibited. The draft ordinance the Law Foundation emailed to council protects residents, small landlords, and small businesses from eviction and foreclosure. We urge that council enact an eviction moratorium and adopt an urgency ordinance protecting the evictions of tenants, homeowners, and small businesses during the COVID-19 crisis. Providing protection from eviction will give our community some relief and comfort in this time of great uncertainty. I appreciate your consideration of an eviction moratorium to protect the residents of Milpitas. Considerly, Michael Trujillo.
Thank you very much, Mary.
Okay.
Okay, that's public forum. And we'll now proceed to announcements.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Councilmember Montana, you're on live now. Welcome.
All right.
Yes. Yep, you're on live now broadcasting all over Milpitas.
All right.
All right, all right. All right. Okay, moving on here.
Mayor?
Yes.
This is the city clerk again. There are two more comments that have come in in the meantime.
Okay, we'll take them, yeah.
Okay. The next comment for you is from Mark Varner, 864 Founders Lane. It says, Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, please include an eviction moratorium among your emergency response measures for our Milpitas community. Thank you, Mark Varner, Milpitas resident. There is another one next from Yoli Garcia, 864 Founders Lane. In Milpitas, we have joined together to make sure we can beat COVID-19. This website also allows seniors to ask our volunteers to take care of small tasks, such as buying a small amount of groceries, picking up over-the-counter medicines, or even producing, providing a telephone call check-in. Volunteers are also asked to check website for volunteer forms at www.milpetasseniarchek.webelieve.com. Thank you, Yoli Garcia.
Thank you, Mary. If there's no further comments, just check one more time here. Doesn't sound like it. We'll carry on here with the meeting. Thank you very much, Mary. I appreciate you. Moving next here to announcements and future agenda items. I'll check in with Steve McHarris, our city manager. Any announcements?
I don't think he knows he's muted.
Let me check here. Is he? Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, Steve, I know you're there.
There you go. I'm here. Thank you. That's a user error. That's not I T. That's Steve.
Okay.
All right. So regarding the novel coronavirus, COVID-19, I'd like to say on behalf of the city council and the city of Milpitas workforce, that our health of our employees, residents, and businesses remain the highest priority for the city of Milpitas. Staff has been diligently coordinating efforts with Santa Clara County Public Health, the Milpitas Unified School District, and other agency partners to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of our community. Our city information is updated daily on the city of Milpitas website with live links to the Santa Clara County Public Health information and guidance. The city business practices continue to change through the week, and the best information continues to be pushed out to our website and our social media accounts. We thank our Milpitas residents and businesses for supporting each other and working together as we proactively navigate these COVID-19 challenges in a safe and highly responsible manner. I'd also like to recognize and express my gratitude and confidence in the city of Milpitas employee workforce. Every single city department has been pulling together and demonstrating the teamwork and professionalism necessary, keeping the Milpitas, keeping Milpitas at the forefront of our COVID-19 response efforts and accomplishments. Milpitas truly is a better place because of them. So I just wanted to let you all know that as well as the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve, our great city manager. And I'll go to my colleagues here on the virtual dais. If there's any requests, announcements, now would be the time. I will look to the virtual raise hand. I see the Vice Mayor has the virtual raise hand.
Thank you very much, Mayor. First, I want to thank the city manager and the staff that's there. I've been watching intently every day, almost every hour, things change. And you and staff have been doing an exceptional job, keeping the residents informed, providing alternatives, and working very closely with the school district. I think it's the first time I've seen that in the three years I've been sitting in the chambers. And I think it has been noticed by residents. And I want to thank you for helping with that, you and the mayor, really. It's, I've listened to the school board and they're thankful to really have a partnership that they can count on during these trying times. I listened to some of the comments that were just made. And just have a question. And are we going to be talking about any issues that have come up of late with regard to the moratoriums and some of those other areas? Or do you want those to be asked to be put on for a later agenda? It's those that just happened like in the last two days. I just want to make sure we, I don't get ahead of myself. If you have a time certain that you're, we're going to talk about them. Maybe that's for both you and Chris. And I'm just trying to figure out when's the best time to talk about those.
And Mayor Tran, I'm happy to jump in. I do think if it's related to COVID-19, then the best agenda topic to discuss kind of additional measures that the council may be interested in is under that resolution declaring a local emergency.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
So I just want to say again, thank you very much, because I do know that you've been there late hours as staff have. And thank you for all that you've been doing and staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Nunez. And the raise hand can be function there. Okay, great. I'm looking for any more raise hands during this announcement and future agenda portion of the meeting. And you're looking, it's for the council here for those that are tuning in. We're using the Zoom platform and there's a button we can press to raise our hand virtually. And that's how we're going to have some kind order here as we do.
Yeah, I don't see that button, so.
It's on the bottom right. Councilmember Montana, you see it on the bottom right?
No, I just see, I just see my icon, but I don't see, I don't see it. I'll just, I'll just, I'll just do a voiceover.
There you are.
Mayor, if I may, for Councilmember Montana, if you look at the lower bar under participants and you click on that, the participants' names will show up and you'll see at the bottom there mute me or raise hand.
Yeah, I don't want to screw it up, so.
You're good, Carmen, go ahead.
I was going to do it this way, because then I'll lose you guys.
Councilmember Montana.
So anyway, yeah, I had a comment. So I'm concerned about our small businesses because I've already had folks calling me and they're saying, well, what do I do since I depend on my small business to be open? And I'm even, it's gotten to the point where they're thinking about closing down. So I had asked the city manager to look into, I know we are an emergency status, so we, we are, I'm sure we are eligible for some type of federal, federal assistance. So I had inquired if we can do a emergency loan. I don't know how that would work. And so maybe the city manager can, can explain more. But we, but definitely my whole point is that we need to help our small businesses because many I think are going to go under. And I'm hoping that this is only going to be for three weeks, because if not, it's, it's the economic meltdown that I'm concerned about in this whole valley. You know, we are the engine for the economic engine in this valley. And if the engine breaks down, it's going to be a lot worse. I think we're going to, things are going to be much more worse than what they are now. If people don't have money, because that's what makes the engine move. If they don't have money, and if they don't have a job to earn money, then how are they going to survive? And I'm pretty sure that, and you know, everybody knows that government is really slow. So my concern is how are people going to be compensated? How are they going to survive if they are ever going to be compensated? My, the bigger issue is the economic well-being of this economy. Because we all know that if, if the economy goes down, then we will have a great recession. And I'm afraid it might be worse. So what are we doing as a city to help these small businesses that are the backbone of our economy? There has to be something that we can do. And I don't know what that is, but maybe the city manager can touch on that.
Yeah, well, also because we're in the announcement section, we can direct the city manager to gather information for us. And I know he'll come back more comprehensively than, but we can take some comments from the city.
Yeah, the time is limited, so just as long as something comes back with something.
Okay, so we'll go to Steve McHarris and then I see hands and so next. Yeah. So we'll go to the city manager and then we'll go to the Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you.
I don't know if I, I didn't have my hand up, but just my brief response would be, we can respond a little bit more detail on number eight, as the city attorney mentioned, under the emergency prepared proclamation item. Correct, Chris? Is that right, Chris?
Yeah, that's correct. If all of these requests are related to COVID-19, then I think that's a great agenda item to have a more robust discussion, direction of staff to come back with. then I think that's a great agenda item to have a more robust discussion, direction of staff to come back with it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll go to the council member Dominguez next.
Thank you so much, Mayor, for the time. So I just want to get clarification. It's, we're going to go ahead and speak on this on a later item, because I also have some concerns, not only on our small businesses, our commercial rents and our tenant rents, along with a bunch of other issues and concerns that have came through my desk. So I just want to confirm that that's going to be taking place, and we're going to have the ability to do so then, and we're not going to use our chance if we don't bring it up during the announcement phase.
No, I think we can all agree that the COVID-19 item is a broad item. And I think anything the council wants to explore, yes, please raise it during that item.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor, for your time.
Thank you very much. I'm looking for any more virtual raised hands. If you, if you did raise your hand, you can put your virtual hand down, and that will assist other members very well. Okay, if there's no further announcements or future agenda items, I don't hear any going once, going twice. Okay, we're gonna move on to announcement of conflict of interest and campaign contributions. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. So two questions to ask the council. Mayor and council to please disclose any personal or financial conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda. And I'll go through the role. Councilmember Fan?
None.
Councilmember Montana?
None.
Councilmember Dominguez?
None.
Vice Mayor Nunez?
None.
And Mayor Tran?
None.
Let the record reflect none to that question. I'd also ask the council to please disclose any campaign contributions of 100 or more received within the last 12 months from any party entering into a contract with the city on tonight's agenda, or any development project applicant on tonight's agenda. Now, I know you do have the hotel project on tonight. It's not being heard tonight. And so I would save those disclosures for the future council meetings, so not tonight. Again, I'm asking the council to please disclose any campaign contributions of 100 or more received within the last 12 months. So Councilmember Fan?
None.
Councilmember Montana?
None.
Councilmember Dominguez?
None.
Vice Mayor Nunez?
None.
And Mayor Tran?
None.
Let the record reflect none to both questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Moving on here to approval of agenda.
So I move approval of the agenda?
One second.
We got a motion for the approval of agenda by Vice Mayor Nunez. We have a second by Councilmember Dominguez. All in favor? Aye.
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 And Mayor, only because we are all teleconferencing, and I know that's probably not an item we need roll call for, but we should do it anyway, just to be cautious.
We're doing it for everything, you're right. Yep. All right, so I'll start from the top again. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Nunez for approval of agenda, second by Councilmember Dominguez. All in favor, roll call. We'll start at the end of the dais.
Councilmember Fan?
Aye.
Councilmember Montana?
Aye.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nunez?
Aye.
And Mayor Tran?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And moving on here to consent calendar. I'll look to my colleagues if there's any request for the consent calendar.
Yes. I'm gonna move approval of the consent calendar. I just have a question about number C6. And that question is to the city manager, are we going to move the anticipated agenda into consent? Normally, it's the very last thing on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, I checked with the city clerk, and the reason that ended up on consent is I believe the last several meetings, maybe, maybe all of them, I'm not sure how many far back, have not been responded to. So we placed that on consent, but if you'd like to pull it, pull it and put it back toward the end of the agenda, that would be fine, too, if you'd like to.
As long as it isn't like it's into anything, I'm fine, I guess, to be there. I just wanted to make sure that.
No. It does not lock you into anything.
Okay, so I'll move the consent calendar as presented.
Looking for a second. We got a motion by Vice Mayor Nunez for the consent calendar. We have a second by Councilmember Fan. All in favor? Aye.
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 Oh, yeah, we gotta go with the vote. Chris?
Councilmember Fan?
Aye.
Councilmember Montana?
Aye.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nunez?
Aye.
And Mayor Tran?
Aye. Thank you very much, Chris. And we're moving on here to, let's see here, one second. Item number eight, public safety. Let's adopt the resolution to ratify the emergency proclamation of the interim city manager on March 12th, 2020, or interim city manager Steve McCarris. Steve?
Mayor Tran, I just wanted to check in on item seven, which is the continuation of the public hearing.
Okay.
So I think what, I don't know if staff has a presentation or Steve had a presentation, but the background on this is obviously the applicant has agreed with the city to defer this public hearing to a future meeting date, and what we landed on was April 7th. But I think we are all aware that we're in a very different world today. And so we don't know if the 7th will stick, because we are in a shelter in place, order issued by the county that runs through the 7th. And so we would just ask the council to go ahead and make a motion to continue the public hearing to April 7th, because the appellant is not in this meeting. I'd recommend not taking any public comment or opening the public hearing. But if that April 7th date doesn't stick because of other health orders that are issued or other directives from the county, then we'd look to push off that date administratively, and staff would take that action and then inform the council and work with the appellant on that.
Thank you very much, Chris. I want to do take a moment here for item number seven. Yes, the public that's tuning in, we are really, I guess, pushing it to the next regular city council meeting, April 7th. I want to thank the appellant. I want to thank the Hotel La Quinta group, business persons for really supporting what's best for the public health. And there are a number of community members that are really concerned about the item. And we're gonna ensure everybody that we're gonna hear the item as soon as possible. And I really hope that April 7th is that date, and that would really signify that the coronavirus pandemic would be at a better place at that date than it is today. And so I do want to take a moment to thank the community for their understanding and patience. And I want to thank one more time the La Quinta 1000 Jacqueline Group for their commitment to the community and to mutually agree on moving this item beyond the 60-day appeal window. And so I'm very thankful for all those folks. That being said, we need, we need action, Chris, by the council. What kind of vote is this?
Yeah, so we would just be looking for a motion to continue the public hearing to April 7th, with the understanding that obviously, if other things happen, in the meantime, we inform the council that the date could be moved, and we'd work with the public, the council, to make sure everyone's informed.
Okay, looking for a motion.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Nunez. We have a second by Councilmember Dominguez. All in favor? Let's vote. We got a vote. Let's start with Councilmember Fan.
Aye.
Councilmember Montana?
Aye.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nunez?
Aye.
And I for myself. Thank you very much, council. Chris, I'm gonna make your life, I'm gonna make your life a little easier now. I'm gonna try to get the hang of this. I appreciate your guidance, Chris.
Mentally remember the dais row. That's what I do.
Yeah. Okay, moving on here to item number eight, under public safety. Adopt the resolution to ratify the emergency proclamation of the interim city manager Steve McCarris on March 12th, 2020. And now we'll go to Steve.
You have to unmute or something.
You know, just gotta get used to that. Out of respect, I put it on mute, so you don't hear the shuffling of paper. But I'd like to just briefly go over what we have before you in the staff report, a little bit of background for the public, and really why we're going for, why we're proposing to go forward this and the recommendation itself. So in the background, as you know, and I think we all know as a community, the World Health Organization declared that COVID-19, a global pandemic, as the virus spreads through California, the governor's office of emergency services, and the county office of emergency management have declared emergency proclamations. Additionally, all cities in Santa Clara County leave at this time likely issued emergency proclamations and/or will have so, have done so by the end of the week. The, as your city manager and also acting as the emergency services director, I signed the Milpitas Emergency Proclamation on Thursday, March 12th, 2020. And that proclamation runs for a week, providing, we knew we had enough time that, within that period, to present this to you to ratify proclaiming a local emergency. That, I do want to mention that in this proclamation and the item that's before you, that does open up the ability of the city to access state or federal reimbursement and recovery funding, which I believe all the cities are looking toward as the expenses start mounting for all the efforts that you've heard staff, staff performing, likely, most likely as of last week into this week and continuing with the weeks ahead. So the recommendation is for the city council to adopt a resolution to ratify the city Milpitas Emergency Proclamation, signed on March 12th, 2020, by your city manager regarding the coronavirus COVID-19. That's really our presentation. I know you have a number of questions. And we have a number of department directors that are available. We've anticipated, talked about, discussed a number of items that have either come to us as frequently asked questions from the business community and residents, as well as some of them from the council members yourselves. So we're prepared hopefully to address most of those. Now, some of these, as you know, things have been happening really hourly for the past week, as we've learned more and the communities have really communicated quite well, kind of teamed together to best, best adopt, you know, or adopt best practices to prevent the spread or slow the spread of coronavirus. So the information is changing quickly, and some of the information or some of our answers, although, you know, we can address to the best we know today, could change as this evolves and staff pivots day to day and really hour to hour on some of these important issues. So we understand it's impacting all facets of the community and the Bay area at large, as well as the state and nation. But I believe that what we've done to date has really put Milpitas at the forefront, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting. And I really thank you for your trust and confidence in staff, and we are here available. I will likely be pointing toward, or asking, requesting different staff or different department directors to address some of the many questions that you'll have this evening. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. As we go through one of the most challenging times our city has ever seen, or has seen to this 66 year of our city's history, I want to thank you, Steve, for your work on leading our city as an organization and as a community, and ensuring that we are the, really ensuring everything is covered. I want to really press that the state continue to take those leadership actions as they have. And as this coronavirus unfolds, I want to ensure residents that we're doing everything we can, day in and day out, hour by hour, to ensure that we are obtaining all the assistance that is made available by those higher governments. And so I want to go to my council now. I do see a virtual hand up for Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I definitely want to echo your sentiments. Thank you so much for your leadership, as well as we all work together in order to ensure that we keep our community safe. And I know our staff has been working just as all of you have been out to make sure that we are continuing the essential services for those that live in the city of Milpitas. I do have a couple of questions, and so I want to be very mindful that I'm sure my colleagues also have questions based on the announcement phase. I know Councilmember Montana will proudly be asking the questions regarding businesses, so I'll definitely want to allot that time for her. My question right now goes regarding, I know that the federal government and the state government, states are working together in order to bring down those special funding that's going to help local jurisdictions during this challenging time. One of my questions is, Steve, I was wondering if you could share with me, I know cities during, after they declare the emergency proclamation, they do this in order to ensure that we could still, so we could start getting that funding, right? And retroactively add up any expenses that the city is making right now as we move forward through this challenging time in order to maximize the reimbursement of that funding, particularly with volunteers. So I'm hearing a couple of things in the community, and I even heard somebody during public comments say regarding like the senior reading program, right? So things like that. If they are, it's my understanding that if it goes through the EOC, if these efforts are coordinated through the EOC, that the city of Milpitas is able to apply that time into the FEMA or that special funding that comes in and retroactively claim those hours of service through the volunteers. But it has to be coordinated through the EOC. So this ratification, this proclamation would activate the EOC. Could you maybe just share a little bit of what is going on with the coordination of volunteer services? Just because I know as we move into the different phases, we're gonna probably encounter some of that. So I just kind of wanted to know if you have some information that you could share with us on that. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Dominguez. So yes, you had two, kind of two questions, one on the financing or funding and financing and tracking, and the other is on the volunteer program related to the EOC. So the EOC is the Emergency Operations Center. And that was activated with the proclamation that your city manager had started, and you're ratifying today to continue. So what that allows is the continuation of tracking all our city staff time, which is probably the bulk of our expense. There'll also be expenditures for protective gear and maybe other materials. You saw we outfitted the city facilities with hand sanitizers and other, other protective measures along the way. So that's being tracked. All the staff is time-coded for, for this, we'll say, emergency event. And you're correct, that all is tied through the activation of the EOC. If this was an earthquake, flood, any other type of state of emergency that we declared, it would be handled the same way in terms of senior volunteer program or volunteers, and then even seniors, as you mentioned. We'd probably be, for one, yes, volunteerism is an important component of that. We, I would say we are early into the EOC operation, so I wouldn't say that we've sent volunteers out in the field in any manner at this point, but we have discussed it, starting today, actually, was the first time we actually started talking about that. And in that discussion, we also recognized the, the county, the county order that particular vulnerable populations, which should be our seniors, not be exposed. So it's highly unlikely we'd be utilizing the seniors in that, in that, in these efforts. I think some of the efforts we were thinking of, volunteers could help bring food to locations, really that puts them out in the field, and that's not something we would do with the seniors. But other volunteers, yes, we will be looking toward that as we move forward.
Perfect. Thank you. That definitely answers my question. I know many of us have a lot of questions, so I will go to my next question. I guess I'll start with two for now. The second one is regarding our unhoused population. I know that there is conversations regarding how are we going to keep them safe? Just wondering if our city has been able to enact a protocol to, one, track our unhoused population, which I know is a common conversation that this council has had. And two, wondering. that this council has had. And two, wondering, since the hotels are running low right now, we're starting to see some hotels starting to close business because they're, they're not being requested. Wondering if maybe that is a, an avenue that we could head into or explore, maybe with some of our local hotels. If their occupancy rate is low, then would that be a possibility for us to, to use that available occupancy to house our Mopetis unhoused populations in order to keep them safe from this virus? Thank you so much again. And I will go ahead and refrain this time for other questions from my colleagues. Thank you.
Would you like me to respond to any better?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, sure. In tracking and the use of hotels. So the tracking, I, I would say that, actually with both of these, I think I'm going to defer this question to our Building Safety and Housing Director, Sharon Goy. She's, she should be available. She can come online to address these. Overall, though, these are items that we've been working on. That's a lot of this through the Housing Subcommittee. We also have partners that are really doing some of this work with the tracking, the field work, the case workers. As far as the hotel piece goes, that's something that some of the other cities are, are working toward. And we've heard that at the state level as well. I don't believe we have, we have done much, but you did ask if we would explore that. And that's something that will likely be a topic. We have our Housing Subcommittee next week, but it doesn't mean we have to wait. We can take, take a look at it, as you mentioned, explore. And that's something we can initiate. Sharon's available. She might want to add to my comments. This will be our test of bringing our first department head in.
Hey Sharon, welcome. I know you're connecting here. Welcome Sharon.
Sharon, you should be, your voice should be at least good.
Well, Sharon's connecting. I just wanted to, and Sharon may raise this. I just wanted to share with the council, the governor did sign emergency legislation today, making 500 million of general fund available for a variety of purposes. But one of the targeted positions or, or purposes, rather, was to support local government to reduce the spread of COVID-19 in homeless populations and provide safe bets for people experiencing homelessness. The 500 million he has allocated can be increased up to 1 billion.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chris. Yeah, so things are, you know, been happening very fast. We've been trying to, you know, look at what the governor's doing. And the governor just issued that order, executive order yesterday. And two weeks ago, the council has approved the addition of $100,000 to our pilot rent relief program. So we have seen an uptick in the request, you know, not necessarily specifically about COVID-19 cases, but we have seen an increase in the number of requests. And we have been working very closely with Silicon Valley Independent Living Center. And I think we're, you know, yeah, making a real good impact in the community, helping out our residents that way. And we're trying to explore other sources, possibly for grant funding also to add to the pilot rent relief program. And that's for the residential community.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much, Sharon. I really appreciate all of the work that you guys are doing. Steve, in that work with that extra funding, because I know that's definitely an avenue for us to help our Mopetis residents if they're having challenges paying their rent. Would it be possible for us to maybe ask those that we are servicing if they are experiencing some challenges due to the virus and then coding them as part of the relief in order to maybe get reimbursed for, once that funding starts coming available from the federal government?
Um, you know, that might be, that's a, that's a good question, Sharon. I don't know if you can handle, field all of that, or if Walter would need to step in as well. But these are our service providers that I believe the council member is suggesting we are paying for those services. So we should be eligible for reimbursement of them. They may also have additional costs that they could also apply for reimbursement. So they're made whole. Does that sound about right, Sharon?
Yes. Yes, we can definitely coordinate, yes, with Silicon Valley Independent Living Center and see, you know, yeah, how we can monitor that. And then we'll work closely with finance as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Dominguez. Next up, we're going to Vice Mayor Nunez.
So I'm going to address that last, thank you very much, Mayor. I want to address that last point first, and then I'm going to go on to the rest. As long as we are asking for, see, I like to do it in the dark under candlelight, moving my arm here. As long as we're going to have to be reimbursed for things that actually are, are targeting the population during this period of time, I am fine, city manager, as opposed to looking for things that go beyond that scope. I don't believe that's what the funding is for. So having said that, one of the things that I don't want to cause is having an elected body get in the way of helping residents. We don't get together enough, frequently enough to help with the day-to-day things that you have to do. I noticed that just watching the things that you are having to change every hour, almost. At the same time, it's the policy decisions that I believe that we really need to be involved with in making those decisions, i.e. when I heard about the moratorium on evictions, when you talk about those that are renting homes and apartments and those things, I believe we already have a system in place for that. We just need to fine tune it. We don't have anything in place, I believe, for businesses. And I think that needs, it could very well use the same model, but it's not in place. So for me, I think we have one of our commissions that's there already, the Economic Development Commission, that could be used as the vehicle for that. Maybe add one more council person. So you have two. But I mean, I think you have something already there in place. But this is new. So I, I think Sharon has built a model already to help persons that have been affected for other reasons. This is another reason. The one dealing with those that are, are houseless right now, I think you're right, it belongs in that subcommittee. And we have talked about it. And we can be helpful there, too. And we don't have to wait until the 19th or whatever that day is. We can do the same kind of meeting that we're doing now. But there's going to be other kinds of things that come up. So I think I sent you today, the one in Los Angeles, where they're not allowing seniors to come to one place to pick up their food, simply because they are the ones that are the most at risk. So they don't want them coming to one place, picking them through, then going back. They put in place something that really, they're now being like wheels on wheels. So those are the kinds of things, hopefully just by you looking at them, you're making the right kinds of decisions. So I'm going to go back to the first thing you said, which is you're the, you cited as the Director of the EOC, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay. So we've had a number of conversations about the EOC. But what is the real staffing of that department? I mean, is, is it staffed enough so that you're getting the help that you need? Do we need to look at that? Do you need to look at that? I don't need an answer. And I was just thinking out loud when I heard you say that, that you're the Director. I'm just wondering, how many hats can you carry during this critical time? Sometimes persons feel they can, they can do it all. When maybe if you look at, what are the things that you can really do here? I know you can't see my hands. Those things that you can do and spend most of your time very effectively. And then other help that we can bring onboard to help you with those. I don't know what's involved in the EOC. But there's a lot of, of pressure on you right now. So I didn't want to see you overextended. So there's that. The, I would like to hear, if I could, because I saw Chief Garcia come out and talk about the impact on the, the PD in San Jose to the officers. And then I also saw the Assistant Fire Chief come out and talk about the impact on fire. The odd thing to me is the, the numbers of firefighters in San Jose that are quarantined now. And they indicated that they got out way ahead of, of the issue. And yet their numbers are so high, it's, it's, it's frightful. And we still have Elmwood that, I don't know if we're servicing or not, but I heard the sheriff say that there are four cases that are, four inmates that are, were tested. If something comes of that, do we have a backup plan for our own employees that are servicing a population that all by itself could have a major impact on the services we provide to our city? And so I'm going to stop there, just so you can either nod and say, we're looking at that. But those are my concerns. But I, I do want to say you've done, again, an exceptional job. It's just, I like the rest one to be helpful, but we also don't want to be an impediment.
Thank you. So I think I can address some of these and then I'm going to rely on our safety, public safety chiefs as well, and maybe even a little bit from our Economic Development Director. So I'll start with your comments on the need for business relief and evictions. That's something that actually, that's something that Alex Andrade, our Economic Development Director, can address. Alex and I have been working closely on this. And they, there are a number of programs that he is trying to link our businesses, particularly our small businesses. I think I actually heard some comments from Councilmember Montana earlier in the meeting about this as well. So Alex will be able to probably address that more holistically. So I think I'll leave that to Alex. The Meals on Wheels, that is something that we are pivoting with, with the county on how we're putting, how we're distributing our senior lunch program. Right now, they're coming in. And I know your comments were, do they be coming in at one point? And how we can get that out? So that would be something that Renee Lorenson could, our Recreation Director, can address. Staffing, let's see, the staffing of the EOC I can address. Maybe the Fire Chief might also touch on it, too. But I would comment on that, that it's not unusual to have a city manager in that role. But it's not necessarily the city manager's doing all the work. We actually have a number of staffs, or at least some staff personnel that are doing that. And I'll leave it to our Fire Chief to review with you. But I also wanted to point out, as we discussed earlier, actually, last year, all the way up to now, we have been prioritizing the EOC as an area to study and look at, to answer the exact questions that you're asking today. So it's not that we need to start that. We actually have a study that we're completing now. Fire Chief, myself, and Mrs. Manager contact has also been reviewing that. It's Emergency Management Program Assessment and Implementation Plan. So that's our start to assessing really what is it we need, where are deficiencies, where are, where are strengths, weaknesses, that kind of thing. So it's sort of a SWOT analysis of it. So I have more to report on that. Meantime, you know, really, real time now going through this scenario, it does point out the needs we have in the EOC and how we're addressing it. Fortunately, we have such a great team. And I mean, when I say team, all city departments, they all have pulled together, as I mentioned earlier. And that's really helped the EOC operate. The EOC does communicate daily. We're on calls daily, actually more than one call, depending on the map, the group of people, team that's together. We have a full team together once a day, and then a more focused team once a day. Not to mention the variety of partnerships we have with the county and other agencies. The EOC also communicates with, much of this is communication cooperation. And from that comes the action plans that we've been developing along the way. And you also mentioned, we back up, there is, there is, we have established backup to the staffing that we have now. So we have frontline, but if they go down, what happens behind them? So that's something we've been developing as well. And it's a good point. We were developing that, a lot of that in real time as well. A lot of cities don't have those plans in place. We're one of them, but we established that before we moved into this week. Last week, we started assembling that. All departments came together, identified that first, second, and third line of events. So Fire Chief Sherrod might go into a little more detail on that. But those, everything else, we get into Elmwood and those, those are a little bit more remote from the city manager's office and into public safety. So I did see, I see both chiefs are up. And I think those are probably the more compelling ones. Why don't we start with the Fire Chief, since I was just talking about that, if Brian Sherrod could come up? And then we can go to the Police Chief, and then we can back, back into the business of Alex Andrade and Renee Lorenson on the, the meals, if there's anything else Renee would like to add, sort of that order.
Thank you.
I lost connection there for a little bit.
You're on.
Yep. So I, I want to reassure, and some of these things have been said already, but I mean, clearly that our number one priority has, is, and will continue to be to protect our employees while we continue to maintain our essential services. And really, what that comes down to is us finding ways to inform and reassure them that we're doing everything that we can possible to protect them. You know, that starts with our continual updates that we've been getting from county health, as they've been available. You know, I have regular email and conference calls with our chiefs throughout the county, as well as all other, you know, the same conference calls are occurring with all other levels of, you know, of the city government. Where we've put practice in place, we are emphasizing our personal protective gear and ensuring that we have best practices within, you know, particular to the Fire Department, within the fire stations, and how we operate on scenes across all public safety and really all departments, you know, creating situations where we have the heightened level of awareness as we move into interactions with the public. We have the personal protective gear that we need when we have to get close to them. And then in those cases, when we have a possible exposure, we emphasize the, the proper reporting, the handling of those potential exposures. And, you know, some of the things that we've instituted within the Fire Department are daily screening of our employees. That includes, you know, temperature and asking them of some of the symptoms that are related to the coronavirus to ensure that they're safe and well and ready to, to respond. And not only keep their coworkers safe, but, you know, those other people within the public that we interact with. And in the case that they have any positive things, we would immediately remove them from duty and then, and replace them with other staff. I think it's, it's really important. I'd be remiss if I didn't, you know, point out that we have a Battalion Chief, Jeff Maloon. He's in charge of our EMS division. He oversees the Office of Emergency Services, but also he's one of our designated infection control officers. And we've really been working diligently to provide that, that high level information to our employees. We've changed our practices. I mean, everything from how we approach the, you know, the potential patients, the, the gear that we wear, how we operate within the fire stations. And then we take that same information and we, and we push it out through the rest of our, both our internal and our external partners. So that includes the Police Department and all the other departments that have contact, that they have the most up-to-date information. Then we also include that on the city webpage and we push that out to the public. So it's, it's really a collaborative effort for us, you know, all to maintain, because things are changing and kind of morphing on a daily basis. So we have to, you know, we have the EOCs, you know, it's activated. And we have conference calls daily that have reports out from all the department heads, including, you know, the leadership from the city. And we make sure that we're all on the same page and have the same message. And we're, we're moving in concert to make sure that we're providing that high level of service for both our internal employees and the constituents that we're serving.
Thank you very much, Chief. I just have, if you, oh, there you are. I just have, if you could touch on Elmwood.
Specific to what, sir? I mean, we, we approach, we approach all the calls the same way. Uh, specific to what, sir? I mean, we so they have, we approach, we approach all the calls the same way. I mean, we've, we've told our employees to assume that all patient contact has the potential for somebody to have not only the coronavirus, but any, any other infectious disease. So um, you know, they're, they're being cautious. We, we work with the institution to ensure that we have the patients in an area where we can treat them and be safe while we're doing that. Um, but our approach to the patients themselves, as we move through this, as I touched on before, is really about that heightened level of awareness, the proper P E P E, and then, you know, the, how we communicate and then transfer that patient on to our transport partners to ensure that they're safe as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, uh, Chief Sherrod and Vice Mayor. Uh, I will look to the council if there's any virtual uh, hands. Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Um, I just have a question. I'm just thinking, um, I know there's so much going on. And again, like the Vice Mayor said, I definitely don't want to get in the way, but I just have a question in terms of something. Um, I know the county is currently having those conversations to explore what may be a continued phase of this, right? Just in case, um, we do need some satellite sites um, for beds, for hospital beds. Um, one of the things that has came to my attention from the community is um, the use of, I think, at the station two. Um, and so I know that that's about, we're about to transition into a temporary location and may, and even demolish that station to just food for thought. Now, I don't need an answer, just kind of, you know, just seeing what may happen. Um, I would like to see we could explore maybe halting the demolition um, of the fire station to maybe um, identify that as a site of placement for emergency beds in and in the case that we may um, need that space um, in the case, right? We, we don't, we have a lot of unknowns, but I definitely, I know that that is a concern from the community. So I definitely just wanted to share it with you. And again, thank you so much, Chief, for everything that you do um, along with your staff. We really, really do appreciate it. Thank you.
So I have a question, Mayor.
Let's go to Councilmember Montana. Thank you.
Um, one of the questions I have is, um, Chief, you mentioned that you, that you are taking a proactive approach in making sure that our first responders are uh diligently making sure that they're taking care of themselves. Um, to not be uh contaminated or affected by that coronavirus. So my question to you, if that is the case, have any of our first responders been tested? Because that is uh, from my understanding, that's a big issue, that there are not, not enough testing kits to go around. And so I want to find out, have they been tested? Will they be, will they be tested? Um, so that's my question to you.
Uh, well, Councilmember, I, I mean, I'll, I'll speak to the, will they be tested? Absolutely. If we have a known exposure to a confirmed coronavirus patient, and we have an employee that's displaying um, symptoms related to that virus, we'll absolutely get them all the help that they need um, through our occupational wellness program. We have physician advisors and we have um, both um, testing kits that are available through the government, as well as private um, corporations that uh, we can utilize to ensure that we have the highest level of um, service and treatment for our employees, whether or not, you know, and it's, you know, health protected information, whether or not it has. But I can say that we have, to, you know, to my knowledge, we have not had any exposure to a known uh, coronavirus patient with, you know, with any of our personnel.
Okay. So, so you said that they will be tested if they show symptoms. So they are not tested right now randomly. They, only if they show symptoms will they be tested, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, there is, there is no random testing for, for the coronavirus. I mean, very, very specific. The tests are limited. And uh, they, they ensure and they only utilize them for the folks that they feel like there's a high risk that they were exposed and um, have likelihood to, to contract the virus.
Okay, yeah, because you know, the, the first responders are the ones that are called first to respond to emergencies. And uh, that's why I was wondering if they uh, get tested without feeling any, any side, any of those, any of those symptoms. But you're saying, no, they don't, only if they do show those symptoms. So, okay, thanks for the clarification. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Montana. I want to take a moment here, uh, also to thank you, Chief Sherrod. I want to also uh, say for the virtual hand, if uh, you uh, have a request, please activate your virtual hand. If you do not, please uh, lower your virtual hand. Thank you so much. Uh, I do want to um, say that our public safety uh, departments, uh, fire and police in alphabetical order are doing uh, a fantastic uh, stellar job, uh, considering the public health risk not that we are experiencing and really the change in our social behavior. Um, and everybody uh, sheltering in place. I would, you want to recognize uh, police and fire, um, fire and police for protecting Milpitas. And um, uh, I know that going forward, uh, I'm feeling the highest confidence uh, in those services and all services in our city. If there's no further requests, uh, but there are. Uh, let's go to Vice Mayor Nunez.
Was he smiling when he said that? Mine, just real quick for fire before we go. Um, Chief, I, I, I think you're doing a great job. Uh, the one thing I, I'd ask is, are, do you put things out on Nextdoor?
Yeah, we, we, we do push things through our Office of Emergency Services and use the, the Nextdoor app and, and the city does as well. And so we've been, we've been really trying to coordinate and ensure that we have consistent messaging from the top all the way down to the bottom of the organization and use those platforms, um, you know, sparingly and appropriately uh, to ensure that constant messaging.
Okay. And the reason I ask is, um, I see P Ds um, at least once a day. Uh, they're pretty good at getting the message out. If uh, fire has theirs out, I, I'm not sure I'm signed up in the right places to get it. Uh, because that truly is how I um, see what's going on. Um, if you ask one, two, three of the persons, um, that the center of this, what I'm looking at, they can tell us how to do it and, and where's the best way to get on there. Um, at least myself, I can do it no matter what I do. The only person that ever reads it is my wife. Um, so I'm posting wrong, but um, I think that um, fire would do itself, a city manager um, a great service to, to get out on Nextdoor a little bit more, because P D, I can see really what they're doing, um, how they're doing it, what they're doing uh, with regard to the public. And I think fire could do, uh, if they're doing it, uh, just a little bit more, uh, so that persons really uh, see them uh, more than just as they drive by. Um, is my only thing. I think they're doing a, a great job. Uh, but that little part about reading it on Nextdoor is um, at, at least from my neighbors telling me, that's how they get all of their information about what the city's doing. Um, so that's my two cents.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Nunez, and we'll go to our city manager, Steve McGarris.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think that we really should bring up Alex Andrade to speak a little bit about our economic development efforts, particularly focused on the impacts to our small business community, because I know a number of you have brought this up. Vice Mayor Nunez and, and Councilmember Montana did bring this up earlier than me, and we didn't quite get to him. And I know he's ready and able to uh, provide you some good information, at least to what we have to date, knowing that this has all happened very quickly, but I think he has at least some good information to share and can direct the business community to the appropriate locations, which of course is the City of Milpitas website. Alex?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council and city executives, this is Alex. Can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Yeah, we can, we hear you.
Thank you.
Excellent. My pleasure to be here. So um, we know that things are changing very rapidly. And of course, this is a public health and safety concern, but there are going to be some financial impacts, both from a local perspective and our regional market. Uh, we're going to experience what I believe is going to be unprecedented, unprecedented um, changes that could have long lasting effects. Uh, I'll start by just reminding you of our major economic players here in, in Milpitas. The entrepreneurs, the employers, innovators and the business representatives. We have over three thousand businesses, and those businesses employ roughly fifty-two thousand people. And we have a unique mix of industries, of course, that include technology, advanced manufacturing, services, food services, of course, retail, health, education, transportation and, and many other unique services. About seventy-five percent of our overall business community is considered a small business. And a small business is defined with uh, fifty employees. And so what we're hearing from
I didn't, I didn't catch that part.
A, a small business is defined as two employees, fifty, five zero. Uh, speaking of our small business community, we're, we know they're, and that's because they're calling us and they're asking for assistance. I believe that the city team from various departments have really stepped up to begin to assist in a very collaborative nature. Just to give you some examples, on Wednesday of last week, on March eleventh, around eight thirty in the evening, we uh, issued a constant contact for uh, business information to over twenty-one hundred small business representatives. Those are twenty-one hundred unique emails. We don't have emails for every business in the city, but I was pleasantly surprised that we do have emails for the majority of our businesses. And of course, uh, those representatives change. Uh, so the, the messaging that was on that constant contact uh, really was reflecting the manager's response to uh, the, the public letters and memos that uh, our city manager has sent out. Information related to the Santa Clara County's Public Health Department and guidance and how to lead on public health matters. But the message was really that the Office of Economic Development was here to support the corporate community. In addition, on uh, Friday of last week, on March thirteenth, the uh, very small but mighty team of the economic development folks, we developed a uh, business resource page, which is part of our Milpitas Innovates website, where we uh, also printed out hard copies for each of you um, on the council and put it on your mailbox, uh, which we also did today because we updated that uh, website. I, there's a lot of information on our Milpitas Innovates webpage as it relates to COVID nineteen and business assistance and workforce guidance. I won't go into great detail, but I'll give you some, some information. We have about nine different links that relate to federal, state, county and local resources, of course, in response to COVID nineteen. One of the most important resources that we've added includes the U S Small Business Administration. There's now an Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program, where uh, small businesses can apply for loans of up to two million dollars per application. We're currently working with Chris Horton. He is our representative for the Silicon Valley Small Business Development Center. We've been on the phone with him multiple times. We're communicating via text and we're talking via, uh, communicating via email. So from a state perspective, we've added information related to the California Department of Public Health, which talks about overall state statistics on COVID nineteen and how to protect um, you know, ourselves. We've added information related to the California Department of Labor and Workforce for COVID nineteen resources and its information on guidance for employers and work, workers related to paid sick leave, disability and unemployment uh, insurance, paid family leave, uh, and various other things. We've added a link for the California Employment Development Department, that's E D D, with information for workers and employers on such things as payroll reports and taxes, workers' compensation, paid sick leave. Um, we've also added information on the page for the Office of Small Business Advocate, and they offer consultant services and training and access to capital. We also have information for the California Infrastructure Bank, which is also known as the I Bank, and they provide uh, small business loan programs and disaster relief. We've added information related to the California State Treasurers Office, where they have one hundred percent coverage on certain loan defaults. Uh, there's information related to Tax and Fee Administration, uh, which is now granting extensions for filing returns and making payments. Uh, there's information, moving on to the, the more regional perspective, there's information from the Santa Clara County uh, Public Health Department, and of course, the order that was released yesterday, which is really important for us because it provides a definition of essential services. Of course, we have information related to the Milpitas City Website on resources. Uh, I already mentioned the Small Business Development Center, which provides access to capital, business training, marketing, various other resources. We have information for the Centers of Disease Control, CAL CAP, which is uh, stands for California Capital Access Program for Small Businesses, uh, I think, which encourages banks and financial institutions to make loans to small businesses that have difficulty obtaining financing. Um, and then we have a list of helpful tips to keep businesses going. Um, I think that's kind of a general update of what we have on our website. We have been in touch with various businesses. We are uh, have been in touch with Great Mall. Things have changed relatively quickly, but we have heard this morning and confirmed that the Great Mall is completely closed. That's retail, as well as the food court. Just to remind you, restaurant, I'm sorry?
No, nothing.
Okay. So food, food is considered an essential, of course, an essential business, but um, only for takeout and delivery. But it has been determined by Simon Properties, and we appreciate this, that the food court has been closed. That is different, however, for the restaurant pads that are um, located independently of the actual retail center, but in, in the um, same area. I've heard from various restaurants, and what I can report i- is that I'm generally hearing that restaurants are about fifty percent down on their daily tickets. Uh, they're also talking about having to reduce their workforce, because for the most part, restaurants are only at this point having to need cooks, as well as perhaps the person who owns the restaurant that's doing the packaging and the delivery and or um, walking the food to uh, people that are waiting. I've uh, fielded questions, as well as Daniel De Gu, our Economic Development Coordinator from General Retail Fund that are in access to capital. I've talked to uh, representatives for manufacturing, they need assistance, and so we're working closely with the Santa Clara County um, and Supervisor Cortez's office. Um, also I've talked about, uh, or we've talked with various representatives from the hospitality sector, and I know this is one that, that has come up. Um, there's been a dramatic downturn on occupancy. Generally, our nineteen hotels um, fall around eighty to eighty-five percent occupancy. We are very much a business um, uh, travel um, uh, industry where our hotels do incredibly well generally from Sunday through Thursday night. Uh, but we're hearing that occupancy in some hotels is down fifty percent. We're looking at forty uh, percent in some instances. Um, workforce in those hotels has been minimized, because some of those hotels still do, do have guests, but the hotel still has to provide, provide services. But what we know today is the business community is just not traveling, of course. Uh, we're um, like, we, we are doing right now on Zoom, a lot of these um, community uh, businesses are, are utilizing the same technology. Um, I would, from a professional perspective, um, believe that quarter one, quarter two, and possibly quarter three of our hotel tax may, may be significantly reduced. I think we'll have to talk about how that works. I have received a verbal request, and I expect to receive an actual formal written request from representatives of Holiday Inn and Spring Hill. Holiday Inn, as you know, opened in June or July of twenty nineteen. At this point, they told me today that they're close to zero occupancy. Um, construction has stopped completely at Spring Hill because of yesterday's order. Um, they've communicated to me that their bills are going to be piling up, and they'd like to make a formal request to ask if, if the city can defer remittance of T O T for the rest of the year to offset some of their losses. Um, that's just uh, a general report that I have for you. I'm, I'm ready to take questions.
I have a question.
Alex, uh, we'll go to Councilmember Montana.
Uh, thank you, Alex, for that presentation. Uh, you, you mentioned that you're getting information out to the business community. So how are you doing that?
We uh, have utilized constant contact. We have utilized Constant Contact, which has gone out to over 2,100 unique emails, as I mentioned earlier.
Okay, but how? How? Tell me how.
Email. He just said so.
Through email, through email. And then we've also connected our webpage to the city's COVID-19 page, so that both pages are talking to each other. I did note that a comment was made, I believe, by Vice Mayor Nunez earlier about Next Door. I think we can start looking at other social media resources in terms of information, yes?
So it's not, it's not, so you're just going through email and you have most of the emails? Or what percentage of emails do you have of the businesses?
I don't know the actual percent, but I would guess we're probably upwards of like 65.
And then that information that you're giving, it's mostly resources, right? Of other, of other, you know, resources from the county, from the state?
Yes, that's right. We're connecting people to information and things are changing so rapidly that
Yeah, I know. It's really, it's disheartening how everything is happening so fast. So can you, can us, I guess before we, I guess I'm done with asking your questions, Alex, but I do want to know, because I had a conversation with the city manager about how we are helping our small businesses last week, and he said he was going to have you look into that, which I'm glad you're presenting that. How are, how are we going to help them directly instead of indirectly with county, with other social, with other services, other resources? How are we as a city going to help them directly? I know that if we have an emergency, if we pass this emergency proclamation tonight, this will open the doors for to get federal funding. So one of my questions to the city manager last week was, can we use some of that emergency proclamation money to give out small emergency loans to businesses that are on the brink of closure? And he said he was going to have you look into that, or the city, or the city attorney, I can't remember. So I'm wondering, can that be done? And how soon can that be done? If it is done? Well, we can give out small emergency loans with, with using the general fund, and then when we get that money from the federal government, that will be reimbursable to the general fund. So that's my question to you.
Yeah, I support your efforts to ensure the well-being of our community.
Well, I'm at mayor, excuse me, I'm asking Mr. Andrade or the city manager or the city attorney if you can have them answer.
Let's go to Alex.
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember. I do have some information related to economic injury loan disaster loans, which I mentioned was $2 million. What I don't know yet, because this information was just approved by the governor yesterday, which has made these low interest loans available. I believe the applicants have to be the small business representatives. I don't know at this point, but we'll definitely research whether the city can apply for that kind of funding.
Okay, good.
And if that kind of funding, we look at various other resources. I have contacts at the governor's office of what's known as GoBiz, which is their Office of Economic Development. But I think at this point, it's hard to determine what the city can do in terms of providing those loans. We certainly aren't in the business of that. However, I recognize these are extraordinary times and we should be looking at every possible
Yeah, and that's why I'm really passionate, because it's really affecting a lot of small businesses to the brink of closure. And not only that, it's affecting workers that can't even, now they can't even afford to pay their rents or their mortgage payments. And so I'm really concerned that this shutdown, economic shutdown is going to be worse than the coronavirus. It's, you know, right now we have a, what do they call it? Shelter? But, yeah, shelter in place. But my concern is that if the economy gets so bad that it might turn into martial law, you know, that, that's the scary part.
Yeah.
Because once you shut down that economic engine, it takes on other faces, you know, and that's been my biggest concern. That's why I was wondering, what can the city do? What can the city do for these people that have, that can't work because they've been ordered by the county? And I have my opinions on that, but I'm not going to say it in public. But, because you know, it's like, it's, you know, they're making matters worse. And I can see that this virus is really taking its toll, but at the same time, we have to keep a balance and make sure that our economic engine is sustainable to have people provide for themselves. So we need to, we need to start thinking about moratoriums, rent moratoriums, as like the city of San Francisco, because people are desperate, and when people get desperate, they do desperate things, and that's my biggest concern. That's why I'm asking, what can the city do directly? And we need to think out of the box of what we can do to help these folks, because they really, they don't, the way that things are going now, and I'm hoping that it's only going to be for three weeks, and if it's more than three weeks, I think we're going to have a bigger problem. And that's, those are my concerns. But I really appreciate you looking into, into possibly using some of those funds, some of that emergency proclamation funds to give emergency loans. Remember, this is not a giveaway. This is a loan.
Thank you.
For small businesses. So with that, I'll give the mic, we'll have somebody else speak on it.
Quickly respond, I just want to say I really appreciate your passion, and of course, we share that passion for our business community. The U.S. Small Business Administration tomorrow is having a meeting, and apparently they're going to be looking at various other pending related solutions, which include payroll tax credits, 0% interest rate loans for $10 to $25 million. There's going to be more information that comes out tomorrow. I heard from one of our local retailers today that she, because she's a PayPal user, was able to solidify about a $15,000 loan in three minutes. And I think what's going to end up happening, I don't believe at this point, and I don't know, I should say, whether the federal government through the Small Business Administration will actually be able to act as quickly as we want them to act, so we're going to have to use other resources like PayPal to help small businesses that may just need $5,000 or $10,000 and not a million dollars worth of loans.
Yeah, just to keep them afloat, you know, and that's our concern.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Montana and Alex. We're going to go to the next raised hand, and I have Councilmember Fan.
Yes, thank you. First of all, Alex, you know, I want to take a moment to recognize the amount of work that you put. I think it really shows that, you know, we're being proactive on trying to get ahead of this thing to the extent that we can. I think that's the key word, you know, to the extent that we can. There are a lot of things that are, quite frankly, as much as we don't want to accept it, that are outside of our domain, you know. Nowadays, I think all of us municipal leaders in the region are quick to try to find a solution to what we're pointing to as a multitude of problems. At the end of the day, the main problem is the coronavirus. Everything else is affiliated with it. So when all of a sudden we become economists, become scientists, experts on the field, when the truth is, all of us know very little as to how to handle the situation, and we can't be expected to know how to handle this kind of situation. It hasn't really happened, you know, in recent years, and local governments haven't really had to even think about how to deal with this kind of thing. So, you know, in times of crisis, in times of chaos and disorder, I don't think that we should operate on what we don't know yet. We have our strengths, you know. Our strength is, among many of them, our staff, right? You, Alex, you're one of our strengths. The fact that you compile, you know, all these resources, that is a strength. That is a value proposition. This list of resources, this is stuff that you have been compiling over the years. It's not, it's not any, I mean, certainly there's extra work done in recent days and recent weeks, but a lot of this information has been added up over time. And there are a lot of things, so when, when we hear our city attorney, for example, say, I'm going to have to look into it, right? The fact that he has to look into it, you know, it really illustrates that this is something, this is an area that all of us are really unfamiliar with, unprepared for, and we don't quite know how long that legal research is going to take. We don't quite know how the operational logistics are going to work out. We don't quite know how the finances pencil out. And these are all things that we should know, and I think that all of this is going to be a good learning experience for us to create a framework as to what to do, you know, in the future, ahead of future crises and whatnot. But the fact of the matter is, let's trust what is proven already. Let's trust the professionals that have established programs already. Outside of that, we got to work with what we know. And I just, I'm very reluctant to be supportive of programs that haven't been done before. It's not to say that I can't support it in the future, but, you know, one of the things that has, I think, solidified out of all of this is that the economy can crash at any time, right? Crisis or not. And we're headed towards a recession here. That's something that economists have been predicting for some time now, way before the coronavirus. That's something that our own, you know, finance staff has projected. You know, the fact that TOT is, is going down, it's not just the coronavirus that is causing this. You know, we have been anticipating, at least, TOT's impact on our budget to go down. We have been anticipating, you know, our incoming streams of revenue to be going down. So that is something that we know. It's not something that we don't know. And when we talk about funding, you know, all these things, that's a lot of unknown You know, outside of what we can legally do, what cities have been able to accomplish effectively, I don't want to, I don't want to experiment here. I certainly believe that government has a role to provide for its people, but there's a difference between providing for its people and just experimenting. So, you know, that said, I think that in terms of the relief or the, the other role that government can play is to create a sense of order in a time when there's a lot of chaos, in a time when there's a lot of confusion. I think a lot of this hysteria is caused by confusion, that people don't know what information is accurate. They don't know how to distinguish whether or not, for example, their business is essential, considered essential and, you know, if it falls within the guidelines of the state. I think if we helped create a framework and get some clarification from the state as to whether or not a certain type of business or a blanket list of the businesses that are requesting to continue operating, if we can get clarification from the state, you know, that this business can operate and justify it under, you know, these provisions or whatnot, I think that would go a long way, a much longer way than us going back and forth as to deciding whether or not to provide financial support there. The other thing I want to add is, banks are still open. Banks are not ordered to close under the state guidelines there. So, you know, it's not like folks don't have a place to go to receive or to ask for loans here. I mean, if they went to the banks, right, and the bank said no, they exhausted their options, okay, then let's talk, but, you know, that should be the first route. And on top of that, something that I think that might be able to help is, for the banks that are short of their Community Reinvestment Act credits, I don't know, Chris, maybe you can clarify and have BBK look into this. You know, if a business has been affected by this state mandate here, if that can qualify as something under CRA, that banks can receive CRA credits for providing loans to these businesses, because in that situation, then it's a win-win for everybody. But, you know, at the end of the day, focus on what we know, right? Just my two cents, and I You know, I would like for us to, you know, just stick to
Carry on, Councilmember Fan. We're hearing you. Thank you, just for us for a little bit, but thank you. It looks like you're on mute, I think. It sounds like you've concluded. Okay, very well. Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Fan. If you can lower your raised hand virtually, that would really ensure we can get to the next person here on my column, and that person is Vice Mayor Nunez.
Thank you. So, you know, I hear what Councilmember Fan is saying, and so I agree that let's, let's not rush to an end that we don't know what that end is. Yes, things look bad Yes, things look bad, but they, you know, I, I don't wanna end up spending whatever reserve we have, Steve, in two days and not knowing you know, what we're gonna do on the third day, you know, I, I haven't heard from Walter yet as to, you know, what dollars we actually have to spend, number one. When they talked about uh lowering the amount down to zero, the interest rate. And that we, the government was gonna start buying back the bonds, that really helps us, because we're selling bonds. And if somebody doesn't buy our bonds, we can't do much. Uh, so there's a lot of things in, involved in this that we haven't talked about, that we may not know all about. So a rush to judgment, a rush to an end is not where I wanna end up. We have a, a, a staff of experts that need to be able to tell us. Um, here's what we suggest you do. And then if we say, well, we agree with eighty percent of that, this twenty percent would like to do something different. They should be able to tell us, well, okay, but here's the consequence to that change. You know, uh, for me, that seems to make sense, uh, as long as we know, and this is what Chris always tells me. Um, I'm gonna tell you what, uh, here's what the law says, and if you say, what about this? As long as he tells us the consequence to that change, then we charge ahead of that's when we pick. Uh, in this case, um, uh, s- small businesses, and I, I thought I heard that two people, is that what Alex said, if you have two persons in your company, you're small? That, to me, I, I thought it was like twenty, but two, um, uh, that's I, I believe that we need a real plan to, to help them, and I, I trust that I've listened to two persons here that are passionate about helping. And I'd rather those two work on that plan uh with Alex and a commission to see what should we do. Communication to me is a lot more than sending an email, it's sending somebody that speaks Vietnamese to a Vietnamese company, somebody that speaks Spanish to a Spanish-speaking company, get gathering them in some type of virtual meeting that that they now can understand what's taking place, but I think persons that understand it much better than I. And as I listen to Alex talk about who he gathered and who he has uh access to, he has all the right people. I think those, Sharon has all the right people really for um the housing. Um, but believe me, um, there's gonna be others added to the list as we go through this in another week, two weeks. And uh, we just have to, I think we're gonna end up relying on staff more and more. Uh, so, so with that, um, I think that as, as a council still, we need to be involved. But we're not gonna be involved, the five of us, in, in all the things that you're gonna be involved with. We have to pick those that make sense, those that we have not only an interest and a passion for, but some type of knowledge about. Um, things that deal with P D, uh, I might have a passion about, but that's not where I have any real knowledge. Uh, but I would look for staff, uh, uh, but then I look to the council, and we have persons there that have uh that kind of background. So, it, it, what I'm trying to do is say that we can go on forever and ever here. But at some point, uh, city manager, I'm looking for you to sort of say, um, you know, what are the major groupings you're looking to take us up down the path towards? What kind of help are you looking for, for the city council to bring to you? Uh, where do you think you have um things more or less um pretty well situated with staff? But where do you need your help, you know, I, um, I'm trying to remember Alex, Alex was talking about looking at other places where we could get dollars, well. Do you need help with some of us to go and talk to the elec- other elected officials at a higher level? Cause that's who we know. Um, do you need us to try to build some type of partnership with, at the county level or at the state level? So that um makes those dollars flow quicker. Um, I'm looking to you now, uh, to tell us, what do you need from us? Because I think every city's in the same position. So, so what can we do to help? That's my question to you.
Alex, are you still there?
Am I, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I was, I was muted. Uh, thank you Vice Mayor, um, and, and Councilmember Fan earlier. I, I appreciate what you have just um communicated, and I'll just get right to it. Uh, the last part, what, what can you all do? We certainly can use your uh guidance, assistance and, and direction, of course. The offer of uh speaking and connecting to other um level of governments uh would be, would be helpful for us. Um, I think at this point, certainly the Office of Economic Development supports the business community, and oftentimes we're not just working on business retention, attraction and expansion, but we're very much uh information brokers, and that's what we're doing at this point, sharing information. So, um, the, the short answer is yes, we, we can use your assistance. I, I, I would like to get together with the city manager's office and kind of determine what, what is the most appropriate uh path forward in that respect.
Thank you very much, uh, thank you very much, Alex, and uh with this uh amount of challenges. Uh, I think it's gonna take everybody's uh um efforts and courage uh and leadership, and so I wanna thank everybody, every single person listening right now.
So when you're dead, I, I wanna have something to say too.
Uh, let me go here to uh the virtual hand that I see, uh, which is Councilmember Dominguez, and then thereafter, we'll go to Councilmember Montana. Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor, for the time. Um, thank you so much, Alex, for all your help. I know that um as a liaison of the economic development team, um, we've been working really hard for, for the past, what it feels like, year and a half. Just really building those resources and that infrastructure to help the small businesses here in Milpitas. And um, we've been in constant communication, I know that I've been in constant communication with our small businesses. And our, their number one request that they've put into me that I would like to share with you, and it's echoing Councilmember Montana's concern, which is accessing cash, accessing capita. And when I spoke to most of the small businesses in our city, they're not talking about capita in the thousands. Uh, I was actually very surprised to hear that many of them um are just looking for, you know, the twenty, twenty thousand max um to just get by the, the next couple of weeks, because um, yes, there is funding that's coming down, um, but it's gonna take a while, it's gonna take um a while for those resources to get to the small business owners, and so um I'm hearing what um Vice Mayor Nunez um was saying, which was really um the role of government. Um, and what is our role of a local government jurisdiction, and I know that um I wanna be very respectful because we all come with different backgrounds and um someone who is studying um and moving into hopefully receiving an M B A very soon. We, I do believe, and I echo the sentiments of Councilmember Montana, that um, I've been looking at other council members' meetings, it feels like for the past two weeks, and many of them have enacted budget appropriations to their subcommittees um to allow them to have that capita access to develop the programs and develop the relief that many of them are going to get reimbursed because we've uh from FEMA and other organizations. And so, some of the things that I've seen many um other cities, respectfully, even our size, do is really allocate um a hundred thousand dollars or less into a fund that then just moves into a committee, and then they are able to distribute those funds or come up with those programs. And that is something that I would like to um support Councilmember Montana, and I do believe, just as she has stated, our business community is looking for us for answers, and we can no longer just push this into a committee and then bring it back to ask for the, the, the funding support. And so, um, that is something that I heard Councilmember Montana um share with us, and I wanna be very respectful of her experience, something that I have learned on this council is to really listen. And listen to the experience of those fellow council members who have been on this council. And she's been on this council before, and so she has those strong ties and, and just as many of us do in our, in our business community, but I could rest assure you that our community is looking for answers and for this body of government to look for some relief. And some of the things that I've seen were very successful in our rent relief program that both the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Montana are leading, is once we were able to allocate that funding, um, which we have added an extra hundred thousand, that committee really took off, and they were able to in- implement those programs um that our community really needs, and actually are helping us through this disaster phase. And so, my recommendation would be to support Councilmember Montana um with her recommendation with maybe allocating an emergency relief fund for our small businesses in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars, which is actually the amount, Mayor, um, I've been listening a lot, and that's actually an amount that you actually recommended not that long ago, I remember in one of the meetings, um, you had stated that it would be a great idea to, um, and I believe you did it in a budget meeting, to give our even, um, I think it was our, can't remember, our chamber, a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was the Chamber of Commerce.
Right, and so.
To point of clarification, uh, regarding me, there, that's two separate items, uh, two separate points in time. Uh, my position today uh is not the one you're alluding to. Uh, we are currently uh in a uh unknown territory uh as uh, a city with our uh financial health, and uh I am not looking to provide any government funding alone assistance uh today. Uh, we uh really need to really value, uh, reevaluate uh our own general fund and, and our ability to even uh sustain, and so, uh, please.
Okay, thank you for the point of clarification, Mayor, and so at this point, um, since in the announcement phase, I had asked this specific question, if that was going to be the part where we were gonna be able to ask future um, to add future agenda items or to address the emergency needs of our community, and based on the emergency needs of our community, of our small business community, I would like to, um, Chris, maybe you could help me at this time, ask for council consideration and ask for a formal vote, and go down the dais on allocating a hundred thousand dollars for small businesses in the city of Milpitas, and to move that allocation into the Economic Development com- Committee or Commission um to then allocate and um come up with the resources and the services that are going to be, be needed um in this emergency state that we find ourselves in, to help our small businesses in their relief as they figure out um what is happening in the next couple of weeks. And so, um, I do know there's been lifts to the Brown Act, is that an action that this council and this body could take tonight?
So, uh, it's a great question, uh, what I'd recommend is if um you can provide general direction to staff, to them to start exploring that issue, and if formalization of that needs to come back to the full council, we would bring that back to you. Um, but I think what you stated sounds like a potential motion in terms of direction of staff. But yes, I think you proceed from there, and we'd be looking if that is a motion, a second, and then a vote.
That would be the motion that I would be requesting from this government body tonight, in order to support um, the idea that came from Councilmember Montana in helping support our small business community to allocate a hundred thousand dollars and ask staff to um move it into, for direction and allocate that funding into the Economic Development Committee. Um, where we could even add another council member, if that's something that this body would like to move into uh for the time being. I just feel right now the number one need from our small business community is to help them with the relief fund. And I do believe a hundred thousand um is not going to put us in a red um zone. We were able to allocate a hundred thousand towards our rent relief fund. Um, so I do believe that our small businesses also deserve the same consideration, especially during this time of crisis. Thank you.
So, I will second that.
Point of clarification, uh, point of clarification, I'm gonna see Attorney Christopher Diaz for legal advice. Uh, is our city in a position uh for any uh financial services for uh direct loans to businesses?
So that's something we would need to look into, I mean, I, I know one of the council.
Can I have this vote then?
Actually, we can, point of clarification, because there has, I'm not, what I'm asking is to do the exact same thing that we did with our rent relief fund, which is to allocate the money into a subcommittee, it's not giving it to another body. It's giving it to our own body within our own government, and it's going to be overseen by our commission. And so, that is all I'm asking for, is for the allocation of a hundred thousand, because what that would allow, it would allow the exploration of programs, and then we could bring that back into council consideration for further vote, and then we don't have to come back to allocate that funding, that funding is already there, it's already allocated. What it would come back for all of you for consideration, and for all of you to have a vote on is those programs and those resources, but today, we're showing the city of Milpitas, and we're showing our small businesses that we have their back. We have their back during this crisis time, and we need.
And this is a crisis.
Uh, look, City Attorney Christopher Diaz, uh, public funds, especially from the general fund. Uh, they, they are not going to be uh really uh allocated uh to any committee uh without uh really um uh clarification uh and specifics on how those funds are gonna be used, uh, and there's gotta be discretion to the funds being used.
Well, of course, there's gonna be an oversight, this is oversight. Every, every dollar that we spend, there is always oversight, and that has, that goes down from the city manager to the, to our financial uh staff person uh with Walter. So, we need to, uh, Mayor, with due respect, this is a crisis. Our small business community is hurting, we're not just giving money away, these are small loans. We have to look to see, how can we help them? This, you know, this will have a multiplier effect, if we help them.
I wanna, I appreciate the intent, I wanna go back to the city attorney, uh, and uh it's, uh, we must really be pragmatic uh with these efforts, which I understand, but uh we need to start with step one, and I wanna go to the city attorney. Uh, we need to find the locality of your ideal, uh, your idea here, so, um, I, I'll start with that. Uh, without taking the first step, and that's with uh legal advice.
So, thank you, Mayor, I mean, what this would be is if council did wanna vote on something tonight, it would just direction to staff to start exploring all these issues with something to come back to the full council.
And that's what you, and that's what, what, that's the que- that is the question right there.
So that is my, that is the motion that I have, which is to allocate a hundred thousand dollars. So with all due respect, Mayor, um, I would definitely like the kind courtesy for me to at least finish my thought um without being interrupted, I would greatly appreciate it, this is a time of crisis. I'm hearing what the Vice Mayor said, I'm listening to what Councilmember Fan said, and I'm listening to the, the texts and the community concerns that are coming through all of our inboxes, which is they need some assistance for a small business to survive this without the help of local jurisdiction is going to be detrimental to our entire city if we don't act today. And all I'm asking from all of you, all I'm asking, and I believe that in Councilmember Montana, please correct me, but what I was hearing her say, what is echoing with our small business community is saying, just go ahead and allocate, it's no different that the la- last allocation that you guys made into our rent relief fund of a hundred thousand dollars into a committee, that's gonna come back for all of you. For all of us.
I have a point of order.
Okay, point of order, let's, we're gonna go to the Vice Mayor, he's got his uh virtual hand raised.
Well, I do have it raised for something else that we were discussing, but if there's been um and for, for a, a motion and a second, it's time for questions, isn't it?
Exactly.
Absolutely, Vice Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Let me get a drink. It's only water. So, so in. So, so in, in all that we've talked about, has somebody there, Steve, kept the list of those areas that we have talked about that we want to provide assistance?
If you're referring to the items you've talked about tonight, I'm sure many of us have been taking notes, but I, I've been taking notes of each of the items you've been discussing so far today.
So, so, and the reason I ask that is um I have um no doubt that businesses have um need and support uh that they are searching someplace to get. So do seniors, so do the houseless, um so do uh persons that so do persons that don't have their own business, they're just self-employed. Uh so if we're gonna be giving out, uh so I'm not, I'm not opposed to looking at the total list and coming back and saying from Walter, how much money do we have that we're gonna allocate towards all those persons uh and all those issues? I'm, I'm fine looking at that, but I don't want to be put in a position where we're allocating dollars and not considering those. So I go back to the seniors that uh we had said we were going to bring them all together and feed them or let them come and get their food or eat there at, at senior center, at Terrace Gardens right up the street. They, they cook within their own establishment, which they had to stop. They're now being fed, uh food being prepared and it's being taken to their private residence. They're in their own compound. Because they're not allowed to eat um because you have to have the, the the six feet between them and things of that sort. So what I, what I don't wanna do is start allocating dollars without looking at knowingly knowing what we're not gonna be able to. Uh I haven't heard Alex tell me um this is how many um small businesses have asked for a loan. Uh this is how, this is how we're gonna do that process. And I do not want to if I recall, this, the Economic Development Commission is not made up of all small businesses, correct? City manager.
There's great mall, there's hotels, there's.
Yeah. So I think the constitution of that group needs to be looked at. And I'm not saying, I, I think if you if, if there's a list being kept of all the groups we're talking about, they can all look at those within your staff, look at all those groups and say, here's what we need and here's some of the groups you guys didn't even look at. Here's what we need to do. Because the school district is also looking at needs they have that they're gonna come to us with. And we should be looking at all of them because some, somebody we're gonna have to say no to. Uh because we don't have all the money. Others, we're gonna be able to say the county can help you, the state can help. I just think that if everybody refers back to the subcommittee, that subcommittee took a little over a year to figure out what we really could do. I don't say we take that much time. I'm just saying, we actually sat down, looked at the needs, looked at the programs and came up with something. I think we can still do that in short, I take it back. When I said we wasn't, I wasn't included in that. Others can do that and um bring back to us hopefully by the next meeting all the needs we've been able to identify, but those costs will be. City manager, you can bring back, here's the monies we have. Because you're gonna have to subtract from that the T O T that we're not gonna get, other income we're not gonna get. And then we divide up whatever money we have left to whoever we think we can assist with that. And then, Chris, I think you end up telling us which ones we really can give the money to. So that, that's, so if I for one, don't, don't have trouble providing assistance to small businesses. But I wanna make sure I know exactly who is off that list, who's not gonna be getting things. Because I made a conscious decision to give the money over here. And the only way I know how to do that is looking to you, City Manager, because that could be some of our own employees. That's all I had to say.
Thank you very much, uh Vice Mayor. Uh uh really brought in the discussion. I appreciate your input. Um I do wanna echo uh what you said. Uh you know, I, I do actually uh want to do whatever we can to support our small businesses, but uh it's not that direct and simple. I mean listening to the Vice Mayor's considerations uh and then also uh you know, we need to check in with our finance department uh the forecast. Uh you know, just about fifteen minutes ago, I heard Councilmember Montano talk about a, a Great Depression. Uh and if that's the case uh with Councilmember Montano, then.
That's why more reason to help them.
You know, if we, if we can't keep our ship afloat as a city government, um you know.
But li- can I? Let me know when you're done.
I will. And we're not in a position to um provide loans, but you know, I think I, I'm open to exploring that. I'm not opposed to that idea. It's just I wanna make sure we're going about it legally. Um to provide uh financial services, uh you have to be insured. You look at the bank, you know, it says F D I C. And uh for us to provide loans, you know, are, are we even in a position to do that? Uh is that a misuse taxpayer funds under uh the state of California? Uh and so I do support uh your idea, Councilmember Montano. I'm saying it right now. I support your idea and I support exploring it. I'm saying it right now, but the thing is um I just wanna make sure we do that first before we start moving money around taxpayer funds. I'm not ready to move.
I understand what you're saying.
I do have a motion. I do have a motion on the floor, so I, I wanna be respectful. We have a lot of agenda items tonight and um I'm sure there's a lot of other points that many of.
Can I make my points before you uh before?
Councilmember Montana.
So I wanted to make a, some comments before that and I understand your, your um concerns, Mayor. Uh but this is a crisis and, and I'm gonna be honest with you, one hundred thousand dollars is not that much money. We pay a hundred and we pay over two hundred thousand dollars for consultants. And yet, we don't wanna put a hundred thousand aside to, to have a committee to, to really do uh the, meet one-on-one with the business owners who are, who are suffering. This is, you know, that's the problem with government. It's too bureaucratic. We as a city should take a proactive approach and really uh think out of the box and really meet with one-on-one on which, which business owners are suffering. How can we help you? This, and this, like I said, this is a loan. It's now, we're not giving money away. We can't do that. It's a small loan. Plus, we are in the midst of, of passing this emergency uh proclamation. Once we do that, uh we, we are eligible for federal funding. So why not use part of that federal funding to help these folks, these businesses that are hurting? I just don't understand why, why people don't, why, what is the problem? These people provide tax dollars to make their, buy revenues.
Is it legal? Let me, is it legal? What, I can't?
Yes, other cities have done it with all due respect.
Let's go to our city attorney for the legal advice.
Chris.
Gave us the legal advice already.
Yes, he said it was fine. He said the motion's on the floor.
That's not what he said. Said he'd look into it.
Go ahead if you want to.
I don't wanna do anything illegal.
Neither do we.
Neither do we. I work for the police department. I can't do anything illegal.
So there was a motion on the floor. I seconded it and I think that was the next.
I'd like to receive some legal advice. I don't want to uh
Okay.
Proceed without legal advice from our ex- expert, uh Chris.
Yeah, I mean, this would be something we'd look into. The one thing for the council to be aware of is uh some cities have done this that I am aware of. There is a distinction between general law and charter cities. Obviously charter cities don't have the same constitutional prohibition on the gift of public funds, but if this is set up as a true loan, then we would just look at the legal mechanism to ensure that the loan is essentially repaid. But, but, but yes, I think if you guys wanted to give direction, that stuff we would look into, that would come back to you.
Thank you so much, Mayor, for, for the point that you made. I actually really, I'm listening to what you're saying and I really liked what you said in terms of legality. And so I'm listening to how Chris repeated the same information. And so the motion that's on the floor is not to give out loans. The motion that's on the floor is simply just to allocate a hundred thousand dollars into the Economic Development Commission that is going to be to help support small businesses. That is going to be, is going to be um dict- not dictated, it's going to be formed together from this commission and along, it's gonna be brought back to us. It's just to allocate the funding. That's all that this motion will do is allocate that hundred thousand dollars that's going to help all the small businesses in Mopitas. We have the opportunity to help them tonight. And tonight I am asking all of you to please consider the motion that is on the floor in order to help our small businesses. These are our small mom and pop shops. These are the, your dry cleaners. These are all the businesses that you shop at, Mayor Rich Tran.
There are no parameters in place. There are no parameters in place and I, I am opposed.
With all due respect, I haven't finished my, my comments yet. So I'm listening to you. Now I'm asking you to please listen to me. This isn't about me, Mayor Rich Tran. This is about the small businesses that are depending on our leadership to come together. This is an opportunity for all of us to come together and unite and show our small business community that we have their back. That we're going to partner, we're gonna collaborate with them to move them forward in a collaborative place. So.
That's a false promise. There are no parameters in place to.
Tonight, you have the opportunity, Mayor. You have the opportunity to make a, a historical difference in this, in a crisis.
That's a false promise.
At this point.
Call, it's called a motion. It's called a motion.
A motion to allocate, so my motion is to allocate a hundred thousand dollars to move to the Economic Development Committee, Commission in order to help support the small businesses in Mopitas. And to direct staff to come up with a plan and resources that will come back to this body in order to move those supportive resources forward. And so I ask for this body to please consider uh your consideration um for your vote and your support. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second, uh I also wanted to make a comment. If, if you can add on your uh motion. Uh I know that Vice Mayor Nunes had wanted, he wanted, he had asked Alex how we can help. And I was thinking maybe forming a, a committee, uh of two council members to work with Alex to uh you know, really take the bull by the horns and, and try to help this, the, the business community. So I, I don't know if you wanna add that.
Absolutely. I am more than willing to, to accept that friendly amendment to the motion.
Uh thank you very much. I, I do wanna check in with the city manager or the city attorney, but I wanna go with the city manager first. Uh where is this money coming from? And out of that bucket of money, how much money is in that bucket?
Okay, well, the, the money, and there was references to how we handle, how money was dealt with a hundred thousand and um for rent relief, I believe that, that num- money was allocated for. That was out of the Housing Authority Fund. And so Housing Authority Fund is for those types of services. Um this would be out of the general fund. So this is, general fund is general fund is used to support all the city services across the board for the city.
Please fire. Okay.
Please fire, correct. How much do we have? I'd have to, I mean, I really have to refer to, I think, our finance director. Um but even before we do that, if you'd like to hear from Ultra Rossman is that we are working on the budget. We are, we were looking at a light to mild recession. We are looking more heavily at that now because times have changed very quickly. And as we report back to you, which will be sooner than later, I, I think in the same timeframe you're talking about hearing this kind of information and this kind of really small businesses, will also be what kind of, it's almost in a sense saying, what kind of relief are we gonna provide to um the, our own city business, our own city operations? What areas that we thought we were going to be able to fund and sustain, we won't. So we'll probably be in fact, I'm confident we will be having a much more detailed and serious discussion about city services.
So, so yeah, um s- um, City Manager, it seems to me that there, there's, I think, two hundred and thirty million dollars in our budget, I think from last I recall. So one hundred thousand is not gonna break the bank. And we pay consultants that much money. So I'm, I'm really surprised that you don't know on the top of your head how much is in our budget. How much money do we have? So I, I would, I, I would like to make sure that we have, there's a motion on the floor and we need to follow protocol and go line by.
Okay, let's vote.
Okay, uh we'll, we'll go ahead. Uh we have a motion by uh Councilmember Dominguez. We have a, a second by uh Councilmember Montano. Uh I am opposed uh due to the fact that uh uh we have uh no information to the uh discretionary funds of our general uh fund. Uh and I'm, I'm opposed to spending uh money um without uh having, knowing uh how much is in our budget. Uh we'll, we'll, we'll go with the vote. We'll start with um a Councilmember Fan.
Nay.
Uh Councilmember Montano.
Yes.
Councilmember uh Dominguez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nunes.
I lost my screen. One minute. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Um wait.
Please do the right thing.
Councilmember Montana, I, I appreciate that.
So I'm going to, it's time of sustaining.
This is a first. Okay, thank you very much, uh Vice Mayor Nunes. Uh and, and so I'm gonna know, but I also wanna uh put another motion on the floor uh for us to, as a city, uh to explore uh th- these type of small business loans in our community, Mopitas. Uh I wanna set a motion uh si- to the council to explore uh this type of program uh to see if it's legal, uh to see if it's feasible and uh to see if it's uh uh fiscally uh sensible. Uh and so I wanna put that motion on the floor. Yeah, uh Councilmember Fan, yes.
Who has the hand up?
Oh, yeah, give it to Bob. It's Bob.
Okay, I see three. I wanna go in order. Let's go to the Councilmember Dominguez.
I'll go last.
Uh thank you so much, Mayor, and I'm listening to what you have to, um the motion that you've put on the floor. Thank you so much for supporting on the idea of Councilmember Montano and I to help support. I definitely understand and I'm hearing the concerns from Vice Mayor um Nunes in terms of um which doesn't surprise me because he's very conservative. And so I totally understand that we're in a crisis and um the amount might be a little too high, but thank you so much, Mayor, for listening to our idea and to, for moving it forward. I really appreciate your support. I know that you have my undebated support. Uh we are one team and we're gonna be showing Mopitas that we're putting them first. We're putting our families first, um especially in a time of crisis. Uh this is not a time to, um I think we definitely all agree that small businesses are important to us. And as a leader in this community, I. And as a leader in this community, I will support, uh, the motion that you have. Um, and it's not because, um, I feel at this time that we could do way better. Um, but I definitely want to be very respectful of the three noes that we got today. And I want our city and the city of Mopitas to know that this is, um, our council. And so it's really important for you to see, um, to hear and to continue with us. Uh, thank you so much, um, again, Mayor, for your, um, motion that's forward and please know you're gonna find my true, um, support and however I could assist with that. Thanks.
So I'd like to speak too as well. I don't know if you want me to go after you or.
Yeah, I'm done. Thank you.
Councilmember Montana.
Uh, yeah, I, um.
Councilmember Dominguez, if you can lower your virtual hand.
Sorry, I don't have a little, I don't have a little hand.
I know, I don't even know where it's at. I'm sorry.
Out of courtesy for your, uh, for council, thank you. Councilmember Montana, yes.
Sorry, it's not coming down.
Okay, well. So, uh, so now that I have the floor, um, yeah, we, as, as, uh, Councilmember Dominguez mentioned, we are a team. I know you win some, lose some, but I really feel that, uh, we are heading into recession and we have to do everything we can to help our business community because they're the ones that bring in the revenues. And they're the ones that bring in the revenues to the general fund. And if we don't take care of them, they're not gonna take care of our city. So, um, I'm really, I'm really, um, sad that it didn't pass because this would have been an opportunity to show the city, to show the businesses that we are there for them. I'm, um, I don't know how they're gonna pull through, but, uh, but I do, I, I, I know right now your motion is to have the ci- have the city look into it, but that was the whole point. To have the money there so that way we can look into it. And from my understanding, Alex was already looking into, to see if we can use some of that, uh, emergency funding to help businesses get loans. So this would have been part of that package deal. Um, so, yeah, I, I will go ahead and support you, Mayor, because that, we have to be a team and move forward no matter what, but, um, maybe out of this, something good will come out of it. So, thank you.
Very much, thank you very much. And, uh, I'll reserve my comments, uh, towards the end of this topic. Uh, next up, that with the virtual raised hand, we have Vice Mayor Nunes.
Thank you. Do you notice how that happens every time just before?
You're saving taxpayer dollars there, huh?
That's right. So once again, um, um, I think that, uh, Alex, are you still there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I am here.
Um, so I'm just starting with this, then I'm gonna go back to my overall statement. So how many businesses have come to you looking for assistance?
I've received about, about eight calls or emails from various businesses that include a, uh, manufacturing business that is, would be considered a large business. Uh, but for the most part, it's been, um, retail, restaurants, um, personal services and hospitality. I would say about eight. And the comments were not always a hundred percent about, uh, needing financial assistance, uh, although some of them were. Um, other comments were really related to what can the city do to help us? I'd say I talked to one, um, restaurateur today that, um, has a, a very popular business and, uh, is needing, is in much need of assistance. Uh, so I stopped by personally to drop off information and, um, there, there is a need. Uh, there's a need. Uh, I, I would expect that every day going forward, I would receive, or, or, uh, Daniel, or other members of our, um, city team would receive inquiries um, about potential assistance. And sometimes it might be financial and other ways it may be, uh, other types of resources that we can. But it's, th- there's a need based on those.
Sure. So, and I don't see the city manager, right? No. Uh, but that's, right now, that's eight out of three thousand, correct?
Yes, uh, plus minus, um, yeah, three thousand. It, it changes quarterly or sometimes, uh, more frequently.
Okay, and, and tell me again what you talk, you said something about the hotel and their request to not pay the fees right now.
There is a hotel general manager that will be making a formal request to see if they can, um, hold back their T O T remittances in order to help offset some of the losses from what they believe will happen from this calendar year. And I was specifically referring to the Holiday Inn and Spring Hill. Um, I haven't been giving you business names, uh, just to protect those businesses. Uh, however, the representative from Holiday Inn and Spring Hill wanted me to, to publicize, um, them specifically, uh, and their requests.
So, uh, city manager. Um, so I don't know who's shuffling their papers, but, um, I, I do know we have to do something for small businesses. I get that. And at some point, the city council has to prioritize who we're gonna help. There, I don't know a way around that. Saying that we are going to look at, um, plans for the small businesses. Okay, I get that, but not at the exclusion of all those others that are on the list that you're creating. For me, um, um, those persons that's come to the food pantry, uh, because they have no place else to go, we have to make sure that place stays open. Um, I think you're gonna find more persons in need of assistance, uh, on rent. Um, just so they have roof over their head. So if, if, um, uh, Mayor, if, as long as that list really is a list that allows us to continue to add to it because of needs that we see, I think that's fine with me because we need to be able to add to it as we see, uh, what's happening and what goes on as we go forward. Because there's more than just small businesses that, um, need assistance from the city.
Can I say something, uh?
I wanna let the Vice Mayor, uh, con-
To that?
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Um, so, so I don't wanna end up pitting all these groups against each other. At the end of the day, it really is gonna take the, um, uh, presentation on how much money do we really have? You know, I, I think that, um, the council person was correct. Um, a hundred thousand dollars will not break us. At the same time, um, if we do that twenty times or two hundred times, it will. Especially if persons are not gonna, are gonna keep asking us, uh, for waivers on funds that, that we're, we're counting on to continue. One of the things you said that I caught was, you're making a list of things we're not gonna do or things that are not gonna get done. I'm interested in that list now. Because my hope is there are things far away from residents, far away from public safety. And, uh, because we need to sort of measure if, if what we're doing is taking dollars away to help one place and it's gonna hurt us someplace else, we need to know that. I don't know when that list will be ready, but hopefully the same time that we get these other things that we're gonna want to do. But, so I, for one, Mayor, um, I think we need to, uh, I had no, no trouble with the recommendation that was being made. I just thought it was too limited. It was too specific because there's many other things we need to look at. I think I said that before the vote. I think what we need to do is look at, um, the list as we go through this and everything on there needs to be considered because we could find that we could do it without any cost whatsoever because another agency does it. Or that we're the only agency that can do it, so we're, we're required, um, because of who we are to do it. Um, but in either case, let's talk about what dollars we have and what the impact of is going to be that if we decide to spend the dollars there and not where we had planned to originally, I'd like to have the city manager say, if you do that, you're just not gonna get this. And that's, that's what, um, Chris has done before when, when it comes to something legal. In this case, if we're not gonna do something, I just would like to hear it from the city manager here so we knowingly go down that path. Uh, instead of saying, oh, if I had known that before, I would have made a different decision. Um, so I was, so I don't, I don't mind seconding your, um, item if in fact it can include that, that list that the city manager's putting together. And what comes along with it is, you know, where the dollar is really coming from. Because that's what I'm looking for, one way or the other, is where are those dollars coming from? I do agree with, uh, the council person that a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars isn't gonna break us. But enough of those will, will have some, uh, negative effect on us. So that's what I wanted to say, um, when it comes down to where we're gonna go next. Because I don't believe we've seen the last of the accommodations. Um, when we talked about, um, the, uh, houseless, I agree that we should be looking at, um, renting, uh, rooms in hotels. That's a huge cost if you keep that up for an extended period of time. It's a cost that I think we should look at. But I wanna know if we do that and there's no way to get reimbursed, how long can we do that? So it's things like that I think that should be included. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Nunes. I, I do wanna, the point of order, I do wanna, uh, go to, uh, Councilmember Fan who's been, uh, waiting in the queue. Um, but, uh, everybody will have an opportunity to follow up.
Okay.
Councilmember Fan's been waiting in the queue with his virtual hand, uh, and then.
And mine's gonna be short, it's, it's not gonna be long.
We're gonna go to Councilmember Montana, no doubt about it. And then after that will be Councilmember Dominguez. So Councilmember Fan, uh, you're up next.
Sure, thank you. Um, yeah, I, uh, wanna offer a, a slightly different perspective. I, I think that, um, okay, it's not about the dollar amount for me. It's not even about, uh, the legality of it for me. It's, it's a matter of prioritization. And, um, uh, and, and, and the problem that we are trying to solve, right? Like, if you, you said we, uh, to, i- i- if a, a, a request was made for a hundred thousand dollars to be spent on, uh, Purell hand sanitizers for everybody, I'd be more inclined to support that. You, you know, i- i- if it's for, uh, the screening, uh, tests or the treatment, I'd, I'd be support, supportive of that. The, y- y- you take a look at the entire situation and you bring it out to a macro lens to what it is. It, it's a pandemic. And what are people actually concerned about? Take a look at Italy. Is their top concern right now, can I secure, uh, a small business loan for, for my business? Their top concern is, will I wake up tomorrow? No doubt about that. Everything else is secondary. And if you wanna take a look at, uh, mentioned the, the, the Great Depression, the, the Great Depression was not solved and, uh, in, in, in one solution, one single solution. You know, Franklin Roosevelt, when he addressed the Great Depression, it was, uh, relief, recovery and reform. So what period are we in right now? We're, we're in the period of figuring this whole thing out. And there's a significant difference between relief and assistance and handouts. Um, the things that are on the table, I can be supportive, don't get me wrong. But that is in the recovery phase. We are looking at a different, uh, part in, point in time in responding to the crisis right now. Right now should be focused on immediate response and above that in terms, for me, of how I prioritize everything. When it comes to relief, re- relief is different in the sense that, um, you don't necessarily have to take things out of your budget for it. It's more so, what can we, what can we tweak around to make it easier for folks? Right? So, uh, Alex earlier, uh, mentioned a, a request for, uh, de- deferral of, uh, of T O T. That's a form of relief, right? If, if you wanna talk about relief for, for businesses, there are so many different things that you can do to, uh, ease the burden, to recognize that there is a burden, but, you know, you, you don't need to contribute on top of it. And, um, a- a- and so when, when it comes to Carmen, I, I can hear you going, aye, 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 you know, like, can, can, can you please allow me my time here? Like, I, I don't do that to you.
Taking a long time, my friend.
Hey, you, you take, just as long as I do. The microphone is with Councilmember Fan, please, uh, we are.
If I'm gonna be disrespected like this, I'm done talking.
We have to, um, um, go by the golden rule and, and we must treat each other how we would like to be treated in terms of, uh, the respect for the microphone, um, as.
Yeah, you're right. Sorry about that.
That, that was, um, you know, I'm disappointed in that because, uh, it was his time and his, uh, freedom.
Well, actually, I forgot that I had the, the mic was on.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Councilmember Fan, I, um, if you have, I, I wanna give you, uh, ample opportunity uh, to discuss this very important matter, um, and please let me know, uh, whenever you're done.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, you know, I, I think, um, I've said for the most part what I, I, I wanted to say on this. Um, and I, I know you, you have, you probably have a lot to add on to it too. Which, um, I think we, we're all looking for, for your feedback as well. I think, uh, of all of us, you, you're the only one who actually, um, you know, is involved in emergency response. Um, so I'm just gonna defer my time to my colleagues now.
Uh, thank you very much, Councilmember Fan. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna.
I hear your tish too, Karina.
Yes, let's, um, let's view our microphones, please. Um, you know, we do have twenty-five participants, uh, in this meeting as well as the internet stream. And, uh, I do want to remind folks that, uh, we are representing, uh, a great city right now, um, called Homeville. Um, I, I know it, uh, these meetings, uh, for folks that are out there watching, sometimes it gets late. Uh, right now we're in a distressed, uh, situation with the virus. Uh, and we are, um, conducting this meeting, uh, through a platform we have not, um, conducted it on before. And so I, I thank the public for their understanding, uh, and patience as we work through all the ch- uh, various challenges. Uh, and, uh, I, I'm thankful for each leader on, uh, council from, uh, one end of the days to the other uh, as we, uh, do our best to ensure the general, uh, welfare of the community. And I wanna go now to, um, Councilmember Montana.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and I just wanna say to everyone, I appreciate everyone and, uh, it's getting late. It's already ten forty-five, almost eleven. And, uh, I was gonna say more, but, you know, it's already, it's already been said and done. So, um, and I apologize to anybody if I offended anyone, uh, Anthony, it, it was no, no harm meant there. Um, yeah, we're all under, you know, we, we're all under, we're, we, we all love our. You know, we we're all under, we're we all love our community and we we want the best, the best for them, so. We we just get frustrated. Um. The so with that, I I wanna make, I want to make them, this is an action item, right? To approve the uh temporary emergency pay. No, temporary, not got the wrong one, sorry.
Well, I wanna pause you there uh if I may, not to interrupt you, I I had put a a separate. Before we get to Agenda Item Eight in its actuality, I I do want to uh go back. I did put a motion out there. For your idea, Councilmember Montana, that you presented tonight to explore uh these small business uh loan programs. That other cities may have. Uh I I I I'm, this is not an attempt to nor change your. Actually, an attempt to support it. Want to make sure uh we go about it pragmatically.
So is this, so I wanted to make the recommendation to adopt the uh Mel Peters Emergency Proclamation.
I had, I put a motion out there already, so.
Oh, okay.
Have to wait until my motion.
Okay.
Okay, I also wanted to do a friendly amendment. Now, if we're going to explore uh the uh economic or business. Areas of of public service, uh we would need a subcommittee. Uh if we had one hundred thousand dollars or uh one hundred million dollars. Uh those funds would not go to the Economic Development. Uh they would go to a economic uh development, a subcommittee of sorts that would. Uh have the same framework as the Housing Subcommittee, which has been. Which has been wildly successful under um the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Montana. And so I would put, like to put a friendly amendment in there to have uh uh created an economic. Development. Small business, a subcommittee, and I'd like to nominate for that subcommittee, uh Councilmember Montana. Uh and Councilmember Fan.
Yeah, that'd be great. I accept.
Councilmember Fan?
Let me sleep on it.
Okay. Are there any other uh?
I would like to serve on that committee if that's something that um would be possible, Mayor.
I'll support that just because I'm looking to to begin some action and if uh any other time we can. I have other considerations on who's on the uh new subcommittee we're proposing uh just because. We are in a time where uh action must be taken, I feel. And so that's the motion. Uh with the friendly amendment, it's to uh have staff explore uh small business loan programs. Not just uh for cities uh that may be like ours general law, but also. Uh to bring back further information as it's being uh pushed out by uh the higher levels of government. Uh such as uh the state or our federal government. And and I think that will all. Um really um wrap around very well, uh similarly to what Councilmember Fan said about. Uh different types of relief out there. And so um and the friendly amendment is the uh. Uh Economic Development um Subcommittee, we'll call it that. And so um we have a motion. Uh was freshman, was it Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay, we have a second by.
Wait, I want point of clarification. So you had recommended two people to sit on that? And so Councilmember Fan said to sit on it?
So you're right, you're right. Council, so it would be uh Councilmember Dominguez and uh Councilmember Montana.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for that, by the way.
Yeah, thank you.
We have a motion by Councilmember Dominguez. We have a second by. I'll second it. Okay, and then uh we'll go ahead with a uh a vote, starting with Councilmember Fan.
Uh what exactly is the motion?
It's to create an uh Economic Development Subcommittee with Councilmember. Montana and Councilmember Dominguez. And also uh the second part of the. Uh motion is to have staff explore a small business loan programs appropriately. Illegal uh for cities um as ours.
If if I may, uh and if if I can uh speak without uh interruption, I'd I'd appreciate it. If you modify it to um change from uh. The 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 language, take out loan and. Uh or and replace with relief, then I can be for it. Or you can, or keep loan and add um and potential other relief. Efforts, then I can be for it. But I I I wouldn't want it to be limited, restricted for the, for just loan and.
About loan and relief?
I'm fine with that. Yeah, and and if if all of you would have allowed me. To have made my point, you you'd understand to make the motion. In that certain way, I would have been for it, so.
Thank you very much. Uh and your vote?
Aye.
Uh Councilmember uh Montana?
Aye.
Councilmember Dominguez?
So a point of clarification. So are you doing two committees with two people on it on each? It sounds like.
I'm not serving on it.
Uh there's, there's, no, there's one gonna be one Economic Development Subcommittee.
Which is that the one that we that I sit on right now?
Yes, and and so that will be yourself and Councilmember Montana.
Okay, and then I I asked if I could serve on this Subcommittee for the rep, for the um small business one.
There's only one Subcommittee that we are um um directing uh.
Approval.
Right now.
Approval for, right. And so you had asked um Councilmember Fan and he said to sit on it. So who's gonna be leading that?
I think we've established this already. Proved your request.
Alright, it's gonna be.
Yes, go ahead.
We've, so just simply, there's gonna be an Economic Development Subcommittee. Which will explore uh what we've discussed. Uh and there's gonna be two members on this Subcommittee, Councilmember Karina Dominguez. And Councilmember Carmen Montana, and that's it.
Okay, so there's gonna be a Subcommittee from the Economic Development Commission?
No, completely separate entities.
Okay. So there's gonna be two, two separate entities, but both um with this new one, it's. You're proposing myself and Councilmember Montana to be on it?
That's a Subcommittee, absolutely. A commission is a separate.
Right, that comes from that. Okay, understood, thank you.
It it's two separate uh it it two separate functions, actually.
Oh, absolutely. I understand that, that it would be two separate functions. And so I'm just trying to understand. This would be totally separate from the current one that we have, correct?
Uh it's, it's like a a bicycle and a a and a vehicle. It's just two different modes.
I I understand that, Mayor. What I'm trying to understand is. So it's a total separate one, and then the two people who you're recommending at this time is myself and Carmen.
For the Subcommittee, yes.
Correct.
It's like uh count, it's like the Vice Mayor. And Councilmember Montana, how they serve on the Housing Subcommittee and and they're doing tremendous, tremendous.
Understand.
And so this Economic Development Subcommittee, you and Councilmember Montana. Now have uh the body and opportunity to um really produce out of that Subcommittee. Um and and bring ideas to the council and um I'm I'm looking forward to uh the work. As we go through this economic um challenge, uh you two are now tasked with. Uh looking after uh and advocating for uh those community members that we speak of. And so I'm very excited for you both.
Thank you. I appreciate your support.
Okay, great. Um and so it'll back to a Councilmember Dominguez for your vote.
Aye.
Uh Vice Mayor Nunez. Uh you're muted, sir.
So I still abstain. I still would like to have uh us have a list with everyone. So I like the idea. I wish you all well. Um I'm glad it's not me.
Yeah, absolutely. I think the Subcommittee will really uh build that list and bring that information to us all.
Okay.
Uh and then the vote comes to me and I'm a I. Uh and so uh back to uh Steve and Chris. Uh do are are we clear with the direction here on this? But that we just had.
We we are very clear. I'm very clear on the motion and that amendment altogether. You said it a couple of times. I wrote it down.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Now, now I, now I wanna go to Councilmember Montana, uh item number eight. Uh I believe Councilmember Montana had the motion. Agenda, item number eight itself, yeah.
This is what the emerg, there's no number on this, this thing.
Public save, adopt the resolution, yes.
Yeah, okay, so this is for the, so I make the recommendation to adopt a resolution to ratify the City of Mel Peters. Emergency proclamation signed on March twelfth, twenty twenty by the interim city manager regarding coronavirus.
Yep, I wanna take a pause here. I see uh our city clerk, Mary Lavell, uh with the virtual hand. Uh is this a request?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mayor. There's one public comment on this matter before you vote on it.
Okay, yeah, sure, we'll take it. Yes, you're on air.
I'm gonna read it out loud. This is from Allison McDonald, six seventy-two Kavaner Drive. Hello again, Mayor, Council and Staff. I'd like to also request that the council make emergency funds available. To house our homeless residents, especially those in high-risk categories during the shelter-in-place order. As they literally have no place to shelter in. This will make all of us safer and prevent further community transmission. Thank you for your consideration, Allison McDonald.
Thank you very much, Mary. Uh I did see your virtual hand uh and I'm. I'm happy to recognize you and uh you can, oh, yep. Thank you very much. I do see one more virtual hand out there. Uh I'm not sure if that's someone who left their virtual hand up or forgot to. Uh lower their virtual hand, but it's, the virtual hand is still up. Let's go to Councilmember Fan. Was that your hand? Uh council, oh, okay. Just wanna make sure, I wanna make sure. I'm doing my best for everybody with virtual hands. Um and so I don't see any further requests. We have a motion by Councilmember Montana for uh Agenda Item Number Eight, Adopt the Resolution, Ratify the. Emergency Proclamation of the Interim City Manager uh on March the twelfth of this year.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Vice Mayor Nunez, and then we'll do a a roll call vote here. Uh we'll start with uh Councilmember Fan.
Can we repeat the motion, please?
Okay, yes. The motion is Agenda Item Number Eight, uh as listed. Uh adopt the resolution to ratify the Emergency Proclamation of the Interim City Manager, uh March twelfth, twenty twenty.
Uh aye.
Uh thank you very much. Next up, we have uh Councilmember uh Montana.
Aye.
Uh next up, we have uh Councilmember Dominguez.
Aye.
And next up, Vice Mayor Bob Nunez.
Aye.
And uh for me, it'll be I as well. Uh. Item passes. Motion is carried. Uh I wanna um really thank and say a a couple of things right now. I wanna thank um everybody uh for uh their um commitment to what's happening right now. Uh in our community, uh as we uh take a step back um this evening from City Hall and get back out into the community. Uh there's not one square foot that uh hasn't been impacted by this coronavirus pandemic. Uh we will get through this pandemic. Our nation has uh gone through many pandemics. Uh other nations, uh maybe not, uh uh but I know America, we're gonna get through this together. As we look to provide relief here at the local level, I want every uh one of my colleagues and staff, all twenty five participants on this call. To know that uh help is on the way uh from uh our higher levels of government. Uh due to the fact that they have so many more resources than us. Uh the state of California passed uh legislature uh passed a billion dollars. But uh as we all know, that's just a drop in the bucket. Uh and and we're gonna see more money coming from the state. And uh with us going forward with a. Uh uh really uh emergency proclamation that opens us up to more funding. Uh and the same goes with the state of California declaring a state of emergency, opening up more funding from the federal level. We will be be alright, and I trust uh my colleagues and our staff to uh go after those dollars, and I know we will. Uh this action we just took is our first step uh of many that we're going to take. Even if we have to call emergency, uh pardon me, uh special meetings uh going forward. Uh I know we're not doing any vacations uh as far as we can tell. And so uh and we're, special meetings will happen as needed, but please note that. Um uh relief is on the way uh from uh the state and our country. And uh our staff will, uh in my uh great confidence, um go after every penny. So that we can maximize our public service here in Mel Peters. Um if there's no further comment on item number eight, I'd like to request this meeting be adjourned. Uh and uh that we all make it home safely, if we're not already there. Any further comments? I wanna open it up. Uh let's go to Steve.
I have no comments. I think we started off the meeting with the good comments, strong comments, strong. Strong up here is community workforce, city council. Thank you very much for your.